All righty. Good morning and welcome. On May 11th, and this is a meeting of the Ventura County Board of Supervisors, and welcome to your boardroom. And at this time, we'll have a roll call.
Supervisor Bennett?
Here.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Here.
Supervisor Parks?
Here.
Supervisor Coy?
Here.
And Supervisor Long?
Yes, I'm here, thank you. And now I'd like to invite up to our podium Chaplain De'Ann C. Coleman. I've invited her to be our moment of inspiration today, as we're also going to celebrate and recognize Military Appreciation Month. Chaplain Coleman is a native of New Britain, Connecticut. She attained her Master's of Divinity degree in 2000, and Master's of Arts in Christian Education after that. And she's served as an endorsed chaplain of Chaplaincyful Gospel Churches in the Reserve and Active Components of the Navy for 12 years. She's currently here at Naval Base Ventura County, serves as the Command Chaplain, and I'm very honored to have her here this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm honored to be here.
Thank you. Chaplain, if you would take those mics and kind of pull them together this way, then we can hear you a little better. Thank you.
All right. Is that better?
Yes.
I'll speak up. I just...
Thank you.
All right. Yes, ma'am. Thank you for having me. Good morning, Chairperson Long and Board of Supervisors. This morning, I just wanted to share something today about being strong and courageous. Joshua 1:6-9. Be strong and courageous, because you will lead these people to inherit the land. I swore to their forefathers to give them. Be strong and very courageous. Be careful to obey all the law my servant Moses gave you. Do not turn from it to the right or to the left, that you may be successful wherever you go. Do not let this book of the law depart from your mouth; meditate on it day and night, so that you may be careful to do everything written in it. Then you will be prosperous and successful. Have I not commanded you? Be strong and courageous. Do not be terrified; do not be discouraged, for the Lord your God will be with you wherever you go. This is God speaking to Joshua in the Old Testament. Joshua was the son of none of the tribe of Ephraim. He was nearly forty years old when he shared in the hurried triumph of the Exodus. He's mentioned first in connection with the fight against Amalek at Rephidim, when he was chosen by Moses to lead the Israelites. Soon afterward, he was one of the twelve chiefs, who were sent to explore the land of Canaan, and one of two, who gave an encouraging report of their journey. Moses shortly before his death was directed to invest Joshua with authority over the people. God himself gave Joshua a charge by the mouth of the dying lawgiver. Under the direction of God, again renewed, Joshua assumed the command of the people and shid him, sent spies into Jericho, crossed the Jordan, fortified a camp at Gilgal, circumcised the people, kept the Passover, and was visited by the captain of the Lord's host. So this is a brief synopsis of Joshua. But as you can see, he was a man who exercised strength and courage throughout his service to his people and to Moses. When God spoke to Joshua, he repeated the words, "Be strong and courageous," or "very courageous," three times. Strength and courage can be perceived differently by individuals, but God clearly explains to Joshua why he should be strong and courageous. Strength and courage will be required as Joshua, number one, leads the people to inherit the land. Number two, strength and courage will be required as Joshua is to obey the law. He is not to turn from it, left or right, that he may be successful wherever he goes. Do not let this book of the law depart from your mouth; meditate on it day and night, so that you may be careful to do everything written in it. Then you will be prosperous and successful. So he fulfills instructions that were given to him. Be careful to obey the law; do not turn to the left or to the right, so that you can be successful wherever you go. Do not let this book of the law depart from your mouth; meditate on it day and night, so that you can be careful to do everything written in it. Then you will be prosperous and successful. Thirdly, be strong and courageous is a command. Have I not commanded you? Do not be terrified; do not be discouraged, because the Lord your God will be with you wherever you go. So if we follow these clear-cut instructions, or let them guide us in our lives, to be strong and courageous, and have confidence in what God says, then we will apply the same principle. Leaders have to be strong and courageous, to foster a courageous attitude from their subordinates and colleagues. Leaders have to be strong and courageous, in order to give someone the desire to follow them and to take them seriously. Leaders should be strong and courageous, to make the hard decisions vice the popular easier decisions. Leaders have to be strong and courageous, to obey the scriptures of their faith. Leaders have to be strong and courageous, to meditate on those scriptures, and to make every effort to use them in their leading, personal, and professional development. Leaders have to be strong and courageous, to work through any fear or trepidation. Leaders have to be strong and courageous, to persevere and remain diligent even when they grow tired or weary. Leaders have to be strong and courageous, to do what is objectively right for the majority to benefit. Leaders have to be strong and courageous, to avoid making decisions for personal gain alone. Leaders have to be strong and courageous, to walk with the confidence and knowledge that you are never alone, but God is with you at all times. May God bless you today.
Thank you, Chaplain. Appreciate you being here this morning. Thank you so much. At this time, we will rise for our pledge of allegiance. Supervisor Parks, would you raise?
Would you please join me for a pledge to our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, and now we will move to the minutes. Okay, is there a motion? A motion to continue?
Please continue the pledge.
Thank you. And a second? A motion and a second? Passed unanimously. Thank you. Agenda review, Madam CEO.
Yes, Madam Chair. There's a revised resolution for item number 35 on the regular agenda. And that's the total review at this point in time.
All right, great. Any others?
Madam Chair, yes. I'd like to ask that items 31 and 32 deal with... Should be heard at the same time that we hear our nine o'clock time certain item. After we hear the nine o'clock time certain item, we'll have the report on child protective services, then be appropriate for us to hear about the social services.
31 and 32 after the nine o'clock?
That's right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Shall we move to adopt the agenda? It's my motion. Please vote. And that's unanimous. Thank you. Consent agenda items 10 through 22.
Move the recommended consent items.
There's a motion and a second to adopt the consent items as presented. He did. Says he voted. Good idea. All right, that's unanimous. Thank you. All right, this time, we have an opportunity for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak to the board, please submit a card to the clerk of the board. And we have two cards submitted at this point, and they are... Want to give me the cards? Okay, Dale Hodges first. Mr. Hodges? Thank you, Roberta. Now I see it. Thank you.
The young lady with the moment of inspiration, as I walked in, she was talking about leaders speaking of their faith and the scriptures of their faith. And the faith that I speak to is from the first persons of this continent, the Hopi. It's over 10,000-year-old scripture, if you will. Not really sure they wrote. I know there are some awesome stories out there. But part of that scripture and part of my faith is that the earth is alive, and it can actually communicate to us, if we're humble. Now, I believe that our rationale has really, really derailed the train of humanity. And what we're doing in this county is really getting out of hand with this, what we call agriculture. The substitution of methyl bromide with methyl iodide, which we're about to... We're looking right down the barrel of that gun. The more we study about this stuff, and the less you seem to be able to conduct yourselves as a body, as a lack of... As I interpret it... Consider the source of these things, please. I interpret it as a lack of sensitivity. And this is a judgment on my part, but so it is, and there it is. There are so many alternatives. And maybe this is probably... It just occurred to me, my passion is, I'm kind of a pioneer in the organic food movement. And I started at the ground, and I had literally the ground level, developing the practices that are accepted today for organic, except some of the more newer things. But the point of that is, and maybe I've told you this before, all we did was study the textbooks from U.C. Davis in the 1930s. That's the way we farmed as a people, without all these post-war chemicals, nerve agents. And to that point, in the schools in Ojai, they're spraying neurotoxins on the grass. And there's nobody protecting those children. There's nobody protecting people that ride their bicycles. And sometimes, I think that the Board of Supervisors, there's nobody listening, because you're not doing anything. Now, my representative has assured me that you're listening, but that's... That's nothing without works. Where are we as a people? What are we trying to accomplish? There's all this jargon about our economy falling apart, and we come to you offering solutions for these economic issues. If you stop spraying those farmworkers, they won't be sick. Their kids will be able to count, if we eat properly. And that means food that's not full of this crazy Monsanto byproducts. And again, we've been studying it. We're not lying. We're not making this up. To that point, this watershed, and this glyphosate on the Arundo. Every time Pam Lindsey comes out in public and says more, we get more to work with. And we're not cynical about it. We understand people have jobs. But the job that is being done within the watershed is inappropriate, because it's not working. It's not working. It's not working. Maybe you saw the pictures we sent you last night. Maybe we can get on the agenda and show you how it's not working. Let's have a field trip. But I promise you, I will not take you into the killing fields, as we call them, where all that Arundo is flat, because it's still off-guessing. It's still off-guessing. I think I told you about walking out there, and it felt like I was on the moon. I was like five feet above the ground. We went out there yesterday, and that's the way it goes. We have video of them spraying from 20 feet above the Arundo. It's just... And all of that Arundo laid down, and believe me, it's dead. That part of it worked. We were walking five feet off the ground. It's just that incredible biomass, and we've got pictures to prove it. We've got pictures of it overarching, and me standing under dead Arundo. And what I want you to know is there's nothing alive. They sprayed it in 2007, this Arundo I'm describing. It's still standing up dead. The footprint, there's nothing there. There's no bugs, no rats, no nothing. Nada. No life at all. But you have your representative out there going in public, saying that the indigenous plants are coming back. And she shows a picture that was taken half a mile away, saying that that was as conclusive as she can get. Again, this is not personal. This is her job description. Make it work. Well, it's not. It can't work. And we know that. We've told you before, in Santa Ana. Fifteen years, and it hasn't worked. So maybe you can invite us back. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Hodges.
I'm giving each one of you, sign the pledge, just strawberries. It's put out by pesticide watch. It's a very serious issue with this methyl iodide being about to be registered in California. And methyl bromide is actually just as bad, and it's being used in our strawberry fields here in Ventura County. And the workers are getting really sick. There's a study that was put out called Profiles of Poison Survivors of Pesticide Poisoning Say No to Methyl Iodide. Well, we should be saying no to methyl bromide, saying no to glyphosate, saying no to 24D, whatever you can think of. All of these different pesticides are horrible. We did send some photos to you that show the Arundo growing back. And the places where they were, like, so concentrated, of course, the Arundo shoots died. The roots aren't dead. It's still sprouting back. We have some great photos of the greenery all through Matilah Canyon. They're going to spray a sixth time sometime this next month, I believe, and I'm really not looking forward to that. That's going to be another sad week, or month, or however long, for me, because I do feel it in my body. I'm really sensitized to it now. So when I drive through the canyon... There are other people, too. It's not just me. My neighbor Rachel told me when she was driving by with her son... I think I told you this maybe a couple years ago. I've been trying to get people to listen, and I know that you really don't have, perhaps, direct influence to totally stop all pesticide use in the world, but we do have some control in our county and in the watershed, which is really crazy to be spraying this stuff that's not even working. But in Profiles of Poison, the California Department of Pesticide Regulation is going to be deciding about this dangerous methyl iodide. And the stories in this report record nine individual stories from across California who have been poisoned by pesticides in their homes, schools, and fields where they live and work. From the farmworker rushed to the hospital with severe chemical blistering and in need of respiratory support, to the pregnant mother who lost her baby only two days after being exposed to pesticide dew, these are the stories of people who have lived through the pain and trauma of pesticide poisoning, and are speaking out to prevent others from suffering the same fate. I did send you the link to this in the email, and there's another story here. It's called "Pesticide Drift: Alluding Efforts to Combat It." This is February 28, 2010. The Environmental Protection Agency is considering a petition from farmworker and public health advocates to ban pesticide spraying near schools, hospitals, and childcare centers. Part of the evidence they cite comes from California, the nation's largest agricultural producer, and a state where pesticides carried from fields by winds sicken hundreds of people each year. Nancy Laura, 10 years old, and her brother Brian, eight, were drenched by pesticides last spring as they stood at their bus stop, a patch of dirt on the edge of a vineyard in central California. The Laura children noticed white clouds billowing out behind a tractor just across the road. Nancy says they tried to hide inside a cluster of vines at the bus stop. "We thought the tractor wouldn't get us, but it did," Nancy says. The approaching bus driver saw the pesticide clouds and pulled over to prevent the 50 other students from breathing the fumes. She eventually picked up Brian and Nancy. "And then I told the bus driver that I wasn't feeling good, like I was feeling sick. My heart, my head hurt, and I wanted to throw up and everything," Nancy says. School officials called an ambulance, and the kids were sent to the hospital where they were treated for pesticide exposure. They eventually recovered, but nine months later, the Fresno County Agriculture Commission hasn't issued the fines to the vineyard owner, and is still investigating the case. There are hundreds of these cases every year, and I don't know if it really matters to you, because I don't even see most of you looking at me right now. I don't know if you're really paying attention, but this is really important. There's the Fairfax pesticide code. The use of pesticides are banned in the city of Fairfax. In Arcata, there's a pesticide ordinance. We could do that, too, here in our communities. So thanks for listening.
Thank you. That completes the public comment cards submitted. Anyone else in public wishing to speak? Okay. We have a couple minutes here for some board comments, ones to be quick. Mr. Coy, Supervisor Coy?
Thank you. I'd like to adjourn to the memory of the people on this list, and then just also make comment here from some people out of Sacramento. I don't think there's going to be a lot of stomach for some of the tough things that need to be done, cuts. Like one senator said to me, "You guys down here in your counties better hang on to every dime you have, because they're going to try to find every way they can get it," as we saw recently. I think that's going to be some of the things that we have to be careful of here, is understanding what we spend our money on and be very careful about hanging on to our cash. So my comments for today. Thank you.
Supervisor Parks?
Thank you. Just appreciate the comments this morning. I know our county and other agencies have done a good amount to try to reduce the amount of pesticides, rodenticides, and other types of toxics in the environment. We noted at the Climate Action Awards, the Oak Park Unified School District has eliminated the use of fertilizers, pesticides. The Caneo Recreation and Park District has also eliminated the use of rodenticides, as has our park areas, too. So it's good to see that happening, and I also share your concerns with the methyl iodide concept. The idea that that would replace the methyl bromide is no benefit to the health of our citizens, so that is something that we'll watch closely. Also wanted to share what a successful event we had at Santa Rosa Park on Saturday. We had 150 volunteers planted about 250 trees, and got some really beautiful trees. I think I at least present some certificates to individuals who donated their money and materials, so we'll do that another time and be able to present that. And I will also ask that we close in honor of the people on this list. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Sounds like that was a fun day. Board members, I had two public comment cards submitted, and I'd like to honor those who came all the way from Piru to make comments, so I would invite Freddie Galena. Good morning.
Good morning, all of you. I'm here to the same way, like, a couple weeks. My friend, Beatrice, yeah, Beatrice Ruiz, and me, came here to ask for help, and we're here today to say to you, Ms. Kathy Long, thank you so much for the support. So that's the reason we're here today, and looks like we have really good news for Piru. We're looking for, right now, work together again. It was really difficult situation for that school, but we, again, thank you so much for your help.
Thank you for coming in this morning. Appreciate it, man. Thank you. And if I might, this is a powerful woman.
Oh, my goodness.
This is a woman who created this, and I'm going to speak to this after you speak, Beatrice, but this t-shirt, Parents With Power. And she is the one who rallied the parents who care about their children. Thank you for being here.
Along with other hands. Thank you. Basically, the same as Mr. Galena. We just came to thank you for your support, because finally, somebody publicly supports us. We had such a battle, I hadn't realized that it had been almost a year in this battle. I mean, trying to save a school, fighting for our children's rights, and your support really did help make a difference. Finally, I don't have to make a speech or anything, but like I tell you, we're being so tired about this. And sorry that we got here late, but there's a lot of accidents in 126. So I really thank you that you let us speak right now.
Well, I like "thank you." Thank you so much for coming in this morning.
Thank you.
It wasn't necessary, but I'm surprised we thank you.
We just felt that the same way we came out asking for your help, we were to come and thank you publicly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Board members, I'm going to take a little privilege here to speak to this issue, because I plan to speak to an under-board comment. These parents were amazing. This was the proposal, a petition for a charter school in Piru. And it was a charter school under law that was to be a conversion charter school, not a startup, because as you may know, there's only one school in Piru. It's the elementary school. It is under the Fillmore Unified School District, but as you know, Piru is at least eight to 10 miles to the closest school in Fillmore. So these parents, over a year ago, rallied and started to raise the information and education with the parents and the community as to what this proposed conversion would mean to them. And this conversion went to the Fillmore Unified School District. Five elected individuals who sit on that board turned this down unanimously. Then it went to the County Board of Education, and five elected individuals turned this down unanimously. And as you know, the County Board tends to be a little pro-charter. So I had been tracking this and listening to the community all along, and thought, okay, that takes care of it. But it was appealed, and it was sent to the Charter School Advisory Commission at the state, which is obviously a pro-charter school advisory school commission. And they supported the charter school application on a 5-2 vote. And the two folks who spoke against it hit the nail on the head when they said that this was... Charter schools are to provide choice. Charter schools are to provide opportunities for parents who get engaged in what they want, for an alternative, for the children and their community. Parents first. This charter school application did not include the parents first. It included the parents last. And it was just... And so when the action took place at the state commission, and then... And these parents, right here, rallied a bus, raised money, their own money, $1,200 in Piru, to get a bus to go all eight hours or more to Sacramento to have their voices heard. Then, when it was appealed to the state Board of Education, which also is a pro-charter school, frankly, stacked board, and it wasn't just my voice, there were others then who really rallied and said, "We've got to be heard." And they got two buses, two buses, and went all night. They spent two hours in Lodi, giving the bus driver a break, to have their voices heard. I went up there just to add my voice, and so did the president of our local county Board of Education, Ramon Flores. So did ML Peterson, who sits on that board. So did Stan Mantooth. And we spoke, and they spoke. They had two rooms of overflow with these parents. And they raised again with tamales and tacos and all kinds of sales, the money to get those buses. Nobody financed those buses for them. And I'll say to you that there's a fatal flaw in the charter school law, when the parents aren't first, when the parents don't... It doesn't come up from the ground up with parents who say, "This is what we want for our children." And the state board heard that voice, and they heard... And what they heard was that this petition took choice away from the parents, because they only have that one school, that one school that is isolated in Piru. So it was just a wonderful victory. It was unfortunate, I thought, that Senator Runner and Assemblywoman Strickland... It was unfortunate, I thought, that Senator Rutter and Assemblywoman Strickland sent letters, a letter, one letter, that opposed this and, and opposed it just on the charter school law that says you will meet this rule, this rule, this rule, and this rule, never hearing the parents' voice. They left the parents out. And so I'm very proud of these parents. I'm proud of Piru. I was inspired by them. And I applaud you, and I thank you. And I was a sweet victory.
Supervisor Long, if I could, I just, I just want to congratulate you for your role in helping to try to organize the community. I know the community really did the yeoman's work, but common sense can prevail in government. Sometimes you have to work really hard to try to get that to happen, but common sense prevailed in this situation, and it's unfortunate that anybody would, from outside the community, would be trying to influence that. It really should have been the, the community members there. So congratulations to you and congratulations to the community members. That, that's, that's our moment of inspiration for the day.
Oh, absolutely. And I'll, I'll let you, one, one quick thing, and please do, Beatrice, speak. What we have now, we have an empowered community, and I've got that superintendent and the principal, and they're all ready to embrace that engaged community, and they will do great things for Piru. And Piru School has climbed up 50% of its APIs in the last three years, 50 points in the API. So they're performing, it's a wonderful school. Go ahead.
I just wanted to make a comment that when we find out that there were a senator involved in this, we were so hopeless. We were so afraid because they were believing all the lies that they were telling. And even then, at state, there was a point where we thought that it was going to go the other way because they didn't find the lies, and we were there to prove them wrong. So now it's like we have to go, keep on going. There might be a change, but then we need the right change, and that's what we said. For them to say that we have used money from the migrant program to pay for our buses, that was the most enraging thing for me, for myself.
And you spoke so passionately. Thank you, Beatrice.
Thank you. But if you notice, now it's like I'm calmed down. I'm not making other fuss. Like I say, I don't have to make no more speeches, and we can laugh about this now.
Now we get the work underway. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your good work.
Congratulations.
Thank you, board members, for that allowance there. Okay, now we'll go to our nine o'clock time certain, and that is item 23, and is to receive and report on our general child welfare procedures and processes. Mr. Zimmerman? Thank you.
Thank you and for this opportunity. It's always a pleasure to come and speak to the board in particular, to give it time and opportunity to educate and to disclose some of our services and the value we contribute to the community. It will be a joint presentation today, both myself and county council, Assistant County Council Patty McCourt will also be presenting in the presentation, and I have Noel here who's going to give, introduce her and give her qualifications as she is an integral part of our, our system. And so.
Members of board, Mrs. Robinson, pleasure to be here on this side of the dais for a change. I'm here to introduce to you the attorney in our office who actually did the work on this matter. That's Patricia McCourt. Patty?
Good morning.
Patty has been employed as an attorney in the county council's office for approximately 23 years. She has represented the county in juvenile dependency matters for approximately 20 years, achieving a high level of skill and recognition in the field. In 2009, Patty received the L. Michael Clark Excellence and Professionalism Award, given annually by the County Council's Association, to the single juvenile dependency attorney among hundreds around the state who exemplifies the high standards and skills the association represents. Patty is the senior member of our team of five attorneys who work full-time on juvenile dependency matters. Because almost everything that HSA does is controlled or required by law in the juvenile dependency arena, our attorneys work closely with HSA employees to train and counsel them regarding the law. Patty has worked with Barry to prepare the following presentation for your board to explain the legal requirements that HSA staffs must follow and to describe our office's role in working with HSA staff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Noel. I'd like to also just recognize that District Attorney Greg Toddin is here also with Jim Ellison from the District Attorney's Office, who will also participates in, in the children's welfare system as well, and, and if he so chooses, may be invited to make a few comments at, at the end of the presentation on his viewpoint of children's services system. Also recognize that I do have my Deputy Director Judy Weber here, who oversees the Children's Division of Human Services Agency. So today is, we've been asked to come back and to kind of educate and go over how the children's services, in particular, children's protective services, and we'll be using those terms interchangeably, works within the county as a result of a case that, that's been publicized that recently had spurred this, this question and kind of a report back to, to understand the, the system. Now, the presentation itself, I'm not going to be addressing a parallel scenario with the case or go over the case, but to educate on how the whole system responds to referrals of child abuse and neglect and, and what activities we do within the system to assure that we're out there assessing risk and safety for the children. Well, which way do I, there we go. All right. All right. So first of all, let me give you an overview of the purpose and functions and some of the rules and regulations that we have associated with the, the children's system. We're governed by, by state laws, the, both the Welfare Institution Code, the Penal Code, and the State Department of Social Services Regulation. It's the State Department of Social Services, or DSS, is the, the state entity responsible for the children's welfare system, of which we become the operators for them in behalf of the state to, to implement the regulations and assure that the activities are complied with in our county. Those are listing some of the, the items that our system needs to have, the ability to have an emergency response or hotline to deal with the foster care system and so forth. The general purpose of the children's welfare system is to assess risk and, and, and safety of a child in, in a home or a caretaker or a guardian setting to assure that the, the safety of the child is, is safeguarded. In general, there are five areas of focus that we look at, from general neglect, severe neglect, emotional abuse, physical and sexual abuse are the, the areas or topics that, that we cover. To do so, we have staff, qualified social workers that perform this function. Now, the, the state regulations require that we have 50% of our staff, both in the emergency response and family maintenance activities area, that they have professional standards and qualifications to do this work, of which 50% need to have a master's screen, social work, and also to complete training on a regular basis to maintain a standard of professionalism. Our staff locally, we have 85% of all our social workers are masters level, so we do exceed significantly the, the minimum standard set by the, by the state and have met that. Also, within two years, a 24-month period, each social worker has to complete 40 hours of continuing professional training. And that training is, is specifically focused on the discipline that they're in. So the training such as best practices for interviewing, investigation, family maintenance, family planning, working within foster parents and so forth are all trainings and focuses that they participate in. As of July, as of July 2009, looking at the report, 97% of our staff have met their 40-hour compliance within that 24-month period. So the standard is, is monitored and maintained very closely in order to, to keep the professionalism and to keep the staff current in the, in the best practices. We are members of consortiums, associations for training and for professional development and for the sharing of, of best practices. Now, in general, that, that's the professional activity that goes to prepare an individual to do their job. But just to give an overview, this is not an academic job in which someone processes a piece of paper or so forth. The environment that they're working under is very difficult. If you could imagine an individual coming into a family situation in which the dynamics of emotional relationships, the family structures, is what we're working within in trying to assess both the safety of a child and the needs of the child and whether or not a child can be maintained in a home or other interventions to protect the safety of that child. So it's a very complex, dynamic environment that, that there is no prescribed way because every situation is different. So the, the training that goes through in order to adapt to those different things is fairly intense, and, and it is a continual activity in order to best meet the changing environments there. So that kind of gives us an overview of, of who we are and what our purpose is. Now I'm going to attempt to simplify how, 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 if you will, a referral works through our system and what we do with referral. Now I'm going to synthesize that down to a simplistic linear type of flow chart to do that. I just brought this, and, and provide, this is the, the flow chart that, that really depicts the dynamics associated with the system itself, and, and a little complex there, but I'm going to kind of distill that into a linear fashion, but to understand that it is multifaceted all, all the way through. First of all, we're, we look at, we do have a significant number of performance measures that, that we look at and that monitors our system in various aspects of, of the work. Here's a comparative chart, just to give you an example of, of between our county and other counties, and it has the state of California there, showing the different activity outcomes within the various systems. So for example, the substantiation rate, which would be the, the rate in which abuse was substantiated, is shown there comparative to the other, other counties. We have a 3.7% rate there, which is among the, one of the lower within, within, within the state, but we look comparative to counties that are similar to us, such as San Mateo is almost identical size, both in county government as well as the demographics of the county itself there, and shows we reflect very well in, in a comparative county.
Barry, so, so a low number in the substantiated rate is really the goal there, somewhat like a crime rate. We'd like a low crime rate.
It, it could be, yes, an indicator there that, that is equivalent to a low crime rate in, in that regard. And, and it would parallel, similar to our county and our structure of our county, of our crime rate and the demographics of our county is, is a low rate of crime. So, so it is consistent in its reflection. There are many variables associated with these numbers, and so looking at them in isolation only gives us a reference point, but details behind it is really, really the key there, and, and further discussion could be made there, but, but it is indicators that we look at in order to monitor how the system's responding and behaving.
Could I ask you? Quick question here, since you interrupted, I didn't want to, but when you say substantiated abuse rate, this is of the investigations?
Yeah.
3.4% or 3.7% are substantiated abuse rates? Not 3.7% of the population?
No, it's of those referred.
Of those referred.
That's 3.7% per thousand children is the rate, but the substantiation, yes. So it is based on population, actually. It's, it's 3.7% per thousand children is, is the, in the county. Okay. All right. So that gives us a little statistical overview.
I didn't understand the last column.
Yeah.
Could you explain what that is?
This is the immediate response, that is a, a time factor for, for a case that is determined, immediate response, there's a time element associated with it that it has to be investigated within a certain time period. Our standard internally in the county is within a two-hour period. The, the requirement is within 24. And, and so if, if, for example, we were at 95% in this particular reporting period, if, if we met a case for circumstances oftentimes out of our control, we hit it in 25 hours or 26, we would be outside that parameter, is what it is. So that's just a measure that we monitor to how responsive we are within the urgency of, of a response.
So what, what would it take to get to 100%?
Well, I, in this particular case, report period, it may have been one case that was one hour over. I, I don't know in particular.
Okay.
But in, in general, 95 to 100 is an operating level that, that you would anticipate.
Barry, that's, that's measured in time of response?
Yes, that's measured in time.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll evidence that, show that through our flow of our system where that, that comes into play. So here's the start of our, our system in, in total here. In box one, we, we start with a referral, and a referral comes in in many forms and fashions, but they all funnel through a hotline for, for a screening activity that has occurred in which the social worker receives the input of a suspected case of abuse neglect or whatever it, it may be there. They, they take that referral and assess it, and assess it for a criteria, whether or not it's going to meet a threshold to, to, that, that threshold to be investigated, to substantiate and further investigate the, the referral. We receive about 1,300 calls into the, into hotline a month, and, and so about 675 of them, as shown here in the statistic, are referred out for investigation there. The hotline worker is a trained social worker, and there's protocols and activities that they go through in, in screening out those referrals. They use what we, acronyms, SDM, or standardized decision-making tool, that is an evidential-based model that is practiced across the state here to, to run decision-making activities through to assess the relative risk associated with the referral. That is one element, not the, the scientific element associated with determining whether an in-person investigation will occur, but one of the many factors that they put into their assessment to determine whether or not it will be referred out for investigation. If, if the, the majority of the, the calls come in, as you see on the right statistic, majority come in through mandate, mandatory reporters. And, and so they, they are trained and required to report suspicion of, of abuse and neglect, and they come in and we assess those. Of all the hotline referrals for mandatory reporters that come in, we are required and do send out the disposition of, of the case ultimately. So they get a, a letter back or, or some kind of communication that indicates what happened to the referral that, that they made in the system. We don't necessarily have to interview the mandatory partner again, or the mandated reporter again. So for example, if they come in and the referral is based on, on hearsay, but we're going to further investigate, to re-interview an individual with hearsay evidence, doesn't give us anything more to substantiate a petition to court, and, and so we would go down our investigation route the other way. If it is unclear or there's lacking information with the mandatory reporter, we will follow up with them absolutely. And usually that is done with our trained hotline workers who glean all the relevant information from a reporter as they are assessing the, the case there. So that is kind of how it works in general. Now, if the reporter is an eyewitness, has some evidential matter, absolutely, they'll be integral part of the investigation and to help us in our investigation as well. So they go through this process in determining key questions and assessments. So they go through this process in determining key questions and assessments associated with the referral. They ask and assess, is the child in immediate danger? Is there imminent risk to this child of maltreatment, abuse, and safety? What are the strengths and the environments of the family around that? Are there strengths, are there other resources available to help the child? Does this referral meet the definitions of the legal terms of abuse and neglect? And so they go through those assessments to find out. If it doesn't meet those thresholds, then the referral is closed, which we call is evaluated out. The mere fact that a referral is closed or evaluated out doesn't mean that it was just lightly looked over, it actually went through a process of being evaluated. But it doesn't rise to the threshold of legal action on our part. So it will be evaluated out. Now, some of those, depending on the situation, will be evaluated out and referred to other services that are out into the community for help and intervention and so forth because of a need, but doesn't rise to the threshold where we would be actively involved, yes.
Barry says, so it comes to you, and you determine that you cannot follow on that particular referral, and you hand it to somebody else, is that what you said? Or can you?
If it's evaluated out, yes.
To the point where...
The individual or family or, depending on the circumstances, it could be in this place or another place, that they could be referred to other resources.
Another agency.
Another agency, community-based organization that may have some family resources available to the individual. That could happen at this point, more than likely it happens in the next step, but that is, those cases that are closed would be referred to other services.
But they're closed, not 100%, they're just set aside because there's not sufficient information?
Well, in this case, it doesn't rise to a threshold, so they're closed, and in our system, they're considered evaluated out, all right? But they're noted in our system as a referral in there. Now, if a referral comes in that is in particular is identifying a physical abuse or sexual abuse, at that point in time in the hotline, it is cross-reported to law enforcement. And so we make a note to the law enforcement and saying that this referral has come in, and then they take care of it on their side through their duty officer and so forth. They put it in there, watch protocols, and list it for their activities for the day. Okay, there. They can, law enforcement can do what they choose based on that referral. They can initiate an investigation on their own. Typically, what they do is they hold that referral and will wait for our secondary contact with them, and then we will contact them again and bring them into the investigation. So in general, we've gone through the hotline and how it gets initiated and assessed. Once it is assessed and it does not meet the threshold, it is evaluated out. Of the calls that come in, about one-third are evaluated out, and one-third or two-thirds are then continued on for further investigation there. So when it is determined that further investigation or an in-person interview and investigation is warranted, that will be forwarded to the regional office. And in the regional office, they go through a similar protocol of assessing the referral that has come in. And so it's kind of a secondary review of the information that has been previously screened through the hotline and the social workers there. Now, the referral comes into the district office under the criteria that it is an immediate need, and we need an immediate response, or there's a 10-day response period. So those are our two criteria or recommendations that come from the referral through the hotline. The district office, the regional office, will look at the information and either do further assessments on it, or they will concur with it, assign it to an ER worker for immediate response, or they can take that and assign it appropriately based on their secondary assessment there. Each case, like, for example, if it's evaluated out, each case that is closed goes through a review cycle. This isn't one social worker doing the work autonomously apart from another, that either a lead worker or supervisor will review the recommendation before it is closed or evaluated out. So it does go through a protocol associated with the screening there. Just as an example, on the ER workers and those going out, currently, right now, our caseload per worker is about 18 to 20 referrals is what a typical person will handle. The standards that we would shoot for optimally is about 16 to 18, so we're slightly above our standard at this point. The state recommendation is actually federal standards that they're trying to shoot for in long term, says that an ER worker should be about nine to 13 cases there. So the workload is busy, and it is significant. Oops. Let me go back one slide. So this is the area that we now move down the line further, that from the hotline to the regional office is now a decision has been made to go in person and to go out and investigate this suspected abuse. If it is within an immediate need of imminent risk for the child, that will be a two-hour response that we will shoot for to go intervene and to assess the risk and the safety of the child. If the child's safety is going to be compromised and cannot remain safely, we will remove the child at that point in time from the environment, and within 48 hours, which Patty will talk about, 48 hours, we would have to issue a report to the court indicating what we did and what our actions, and the court will decide whether or not we were prudent and we acted appropriately within the system there.
Barry.
Yes.
Is this the legal protocol or our procedure, or do we follow that one, two, three, four, five?
This is, yeah, this is how the regulatory and legally the system is set up to follow these steps and these procedures throughout, yeah.
And what are the ramifications if you don't follow those?
Well, if we don't follow those, then more than likely we will miss steps and not be able to, you know, have the court substantiate and sustain our actions. Okay, so that's why we follow these protocols pretty closely, and it's a natural flow of how one would go through an investigation there. So the social worker then goes out, whether it's an immediate risk or 10 days to do the investigation in interviewing the parties, and whomever they also glean out of the investigation that may be associated with the case that would offer them evidence and insight into the environment that is happening there, both from the perspective of the perpetrator and the events that occurred, as well as assessing, you know, likelihood of protecting and maintaining the child in a safe environment. So they're doing multiple things at once as they're out there in the field. They do not necessarily do this in isolation. If a call comes in and is health-related, in particular, we can identify that, if it's health-related in the sense that it's physical trauma, failure to thrive, severe malnutrition, those type things, a public health nurse will accompany us as we go out and do the investigation. And this is not unusual for a social worker to have others participate in the response as well as further investigation associated with the complaint. So public health nurses, and we're privileged here in this county to have a great relationship with public health, in which we actually have public health nurses, we call them embedded with us, that work side by side with our social workers in the offices and so forth, and are invaluable to use as an expert resource for advice associated with, you know, health issues, treatment issues, and these type things with children, whether they physically go with us or review cases in the office with us. In addition, if it's physical abuse and sexual abuse and those type things, oftentimes law enforcement is with us and dealing with the investigation and also assisting in gathering information around the suspected abuse. So we do call on resources and have multiple individuals participate with us in investigative process. In addition, if a referral comes in a second time or a third time, which does happen there, our protocol is not to reassign it to the same social worker that went previously. That we do assign new social workers, new set of eyes associated with the referral coming in to get a different point of view. And all the way through, especially in those that we consider very high-profile and difficult cases, supervisors and managers are intimately involved in the casework and guiding in this process. It is during this process of our initial investigation and follow-up investigation also, we consult with county counsel and our attorneys on, you know, what we need in order to do certain actions, whether it's further investigative work, more invasive work, do we have enough to go forward with that or not? And so we do consult with legal counsel in that regard. From the results of an investigation, we have determinations that can be made after we've done a thorough job and have consulted with the professionals that we have associated with our system, is that the circumstances may warrant that we do not have enough evidence to substantiate that abuse occurred. And at that point, we would close the case either as unfounded or inconclusive, and so the case is closed. However, the case notes and the history of the investigation remains in our system. And so if by happenstance it comes back as a re-referral in this case, the next caseworker will look at the investigative history and not necessarily the disposition that it was necessarily closed, unfounded or inconclusive, which means that they're always looking at the historical facts of the investigation and not necessarily just relying on the disposition of the previous case there. If it is, there's evidence there, and of the threshold of abuse, we substantiate the case, and then actions go into place to either protect the child or to do interventions that would remedy the risk associated with the child. If it's physical abuse and sexual abuse, once again, that's a cross-report at this point in time with law enforcement, and more likely with the substantiation, and law enforcement will join or participate in the investigative part there. So that's it. I did want to point out, though, in this point in time, when we go through our investigations and we come to a point in which we have enough to do secondary or follow-up reviews, we do have a broader network of participants that can participate with us in that. For example, if it's substantiated and we have enough cause, we invoke what's called MBIC, the Multidisciplinary Interview Center, which is a center and a secondary review associated with sexual abuse and severe physical abuse and so forth, which brings in many players to participate in intervening with the case, both in solidifying evidence associated with the case as well as case planning and planning for the protection of the victim associated with the case. And previously, I know there was comments made, similar to Fresno had a secondary team. What I just described is what Fresno has in place. And we've had this in place, as a matter of fact, we were one of the leaders in the state to set this up with the district attorney's office, their victim's services unit, many years ago, in the mid-'90s is when that was established, and that protocol's in place today in which we have that team to do secondary reviews for us.
Barry, have you made it clear from the start that that secondary team has been in place all along? Is this the first time you've made it clear that a secondary team, similar to what Fresno has?
Well, when it was thrown out, Fresno has a secondary team, I didn't know what that referred to, but this is the first time I publicly have stated that that secondary team has been in place for a long time.
Thank you. Certainly don't think the public's aware of that, so thanks, yeah.
Thank you. So that gets us through our system, through investigation, basically, kind of an overview. And I know I left out a lot of detail that I could go into on the specifics of investigating protocols and so forth, but that gives you an overview of how the system works and how kind of we're working through it. So we've either disposed of a case in a disposition fashion, either closed it for insufficient thresholds for abuse, or we've substantiated at this point. So now I'm going to turn the time over to Patty to really go over the evidential matter that we need in substantiating a case and what happens with the court system from there.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Barry.
You got that?
Do I have a more part?
You want me to do it?
No. Good morning. I'm happy to be here. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Ms. Robinson. As Noel said, I have been in this business for a long time, so I'm hoping this morning that I can shed some light on any of your concerns, any of your questions. It's an area that I feel rather passionate about, so I'm hoping that I can answer some of those questions. Barry has told you a little bit about kind of the front end of the process, what happens when referrals come in, kind of an overview of the system, and how we might compare it to other counties. But I think what's absolutely vital to your understanding of how our system works is to also understand what happens to that information. Once a hotline referral is made, we get some preliminary information, and a social worker goes out into the field. Now what happens? And I want to back up for a second before I talk about what level of information, what level of evidence we need to prove a case in court. I want to just provide you a backdrop in terms of what the overall legal system has become. There are three critical points that the law tells us we have to, we are obligated to fulfill these days, and at first blush, I know these are going to sound like they are inconsistent with one another. The first is protection and safety of the child, that's our uppermost goal. Second, which sounds somewhat inconsistent, is the preservation of the family. And third is the timely protection of stable and permanent homes. Well, what that translates into basically is to say, our first goal is to protect children. If we know a child is at risk in the community, we must ultimately remove the child from the family. However, the law has also told us in the last 25 years, with some major legislative changes, that we have to, as Barry has said, look to other avenues. If there are resources and services that we can put into place to prevent that child being removed from the family, we are absolutely mandated to do so. If we then remove a child from the family, we are also legally obligated to provide what we call family reunification services once we get a petition into court and it's adjudicated by the court. And thirdly, that last goal, which again may sound somewhat inconsistent with what I've just said, is to say, if we are successful, and a family is successful, and a child is ultimately returned to their family, that's what we are trying to achieve in dependency court. However, that doesn't always happen. And if we're not successful in doing so, then that third goal comes into play. We are absolutely obligated to see if we can achieve a permanent home for that child, whether it be a legal guardianship or an adoption. That's really a backdrop that I think is important to understanding our system. As I've said, there have been enormous changes in this field in the last 25 years, major statutory changes in the state of California. And a lot of what that has translated into has been to say, we need to move these cases through the system quicker. It used to be, and I'm sure you remember, that kids used to languish in foster care for year after year after year, and no decision was made about whether or not that child could either be returned home or put into some kind of a permanent home. A lot of that has changed. We are providing services upfront to these families in an attempt to either get that child returned home, or again, if not, to achieve permanency. With those statutory changes, a lot of other things have happened too, I'm afraid to say, and that is, I guess, gone are the days when what we used to see primarily were the dirty home cases. You know, when I first got involved in this area in LA County, even before I came up here, a lot of what we saw in child dependency were the dirty home, marijuana use, pretty low-level, forgive me, but low-level types of cases. That's not the reality that we're dealing with in child dependency law these days here in Ventura County. And we don't have it as bad as we might have it in LA County or in San Diego County or the larger metropolitan areas, but what we're seeing is an increasingly severe level of domestic violence and other forms of violence that young children are being exposed to. We are seeing young children living in absolute squalor in this county as a result of their parents being addicted to heroin, being addicted to methamphetamine, being addicted to cocaine. And with that comes the criminal element that goes in and out of a home that young children are constantly... children are constantly exposed to, where they're being raised by every criminal who wanders in, by every prostitute who wanders in. We are seeing children with increasingly severe physical, intentionally inflicted injuries. We're talking about being beaten, we're talking about intentional cigarette burns, we're talking about broken bones. And I'm not here to depress you, I'm sorry. Every time I get into this discussion, I realize it's not a happy subject, but I think it's important that you, as a board, understand what we're really talking about here, what kinds of cases are a reality in this county right now. So let's talk about what do we need to do to remove a child? And right now, I'm talking about just, I may need Barry's help on this. Noel could tell you how un-techno I am here. Oh, my. Maybe it wasn't my fault. There it is, okay. I'm talking first about the temporary custody of a child in the field. This is an in-field detention. First of all, as a statutory framework, we're talking about Welfare and Institutions Code, Section 300. That really provides us our framework upon which we are obligated to file a petition because Section 300 contains essentially 10 subsections, different kinds of abuse, if you will. Can it contain physical abuse, sexual abuse, the whole range of types of cases, and that provides us our framework. Our social workers must go into the field, and Barry has talked to you a little bit about referrals, but I want to tell you a little bit more about how that works and how that interacts with the legal system. Referrals, as Barry has mentioned, can come in from a variety of sources. They can come in anywhere from what I would really say is kind of a low-level benign referral, some interested neighbor who says, you know what, I heard a child crying next door and I'm really concerned. Well, there is a concern to that, and we will go out and we will check on that, but that's a little bit more difficult to get a handle on once we get out there. Some situations are much more straightforward than that. Oftentimes, as Barry's statistics, I think, bear out, we get our first referral from law enforcement. The police are already in the field, they may well be in the process of arresting the parents. The parents may have been arrested for drugs, we may have a meth lab on our hands and children are present in that home. So the police have been the first responders, and they now have called the social worker out onto the scene. The social worker is obligated, obligated to come out. We do our own independent investigation, so we really have kind of a double check on any of those cases where we're involved with law enforcement. We often also have what we call joint investigations with law enforcement. On our more serious physical and sexual abuse cases, more often than not, those are joint investigations where we are working very closely with law enforcement. Either one or both have gotten the first referral information, we are sharing information, we are talking to law enforcement, our social workers are calling us in the county council's office to find out what's the best next step. Those cases take a lot more scrutiny and a lot more involvement from everybody. A lot of other calls are more difficult, and those are the ones that I guess fall somewhere in the middle because they involve sometimes very young child victims. For instance, let's say we have a social worker who gets a call, and the report from the referring party basically is that a young child is telling us that their friend told them that they're being hit all the time by their father, that their father's real mean. And that may be the only piece of information that we're getting in the referral. So our social worker goes out in the field, our social worker talks to the victim, and the victim denies that he's being hit. No, everything's fine at home. Nope, my dad's not mean. No, everything's fine. And that's pretty typical because we all know that a lot of these kids are going to try and protect their parents. Well, it doesn't stop at that. Certainly, the social worker is going to try and do a physical examination of some sort to see if the child has any visible bruises, any visible marks, but oftentimes, the child doesn't. It may have been days since dad hit that child, and maybe those bruises are gone. So now, what we have is we have nothing more than a hearsay statement having come in from the referral source, very interested, very concerned person, maybe a citizen, but we have a victim who's denying that anything has happened, we have a family who's denying that anything has happened, and we have no physical evidence. Can we legally remove that child? Absolutely not. We need something more. We absolutely have to have a reasonable belief that that child is coming within the section of 300 of the WNI Code, and we have to find that that child, we have reasonable cause to believe that that child is in imminent danger. Okay? One of the most important things that we tell our social workers to ask witnesses, especially the, again, it may be the original referring party or somebody who says they know something, is we tell them to ask, how do you know that? Do you know that because you saw something? Or do you know that because somebody else told you that? Vitaly important and a big distinction. Because as I know you know, if we have an eyewitness or if we have, again, a credible victim, it can make all the difference in the world. And if we don't, we really may not be able to file that case. Because a case cannot be filed based on merely something that somebody else said, it can't be based on hearsay or gossip, it can't be based, as much as sometimes we'd like it to, on a gut instinct. Our social workers have great gut instinct, but that's not going to be good enough when we get into a court of law, unfortunately. So the social worker does what they can to address and interview every witness they can, the victim, the family, the relatives, the neighbors, anybody who might have relevant evidence based on whatever that referral information was. One of the other things that the social worker also has to do is to assess the veracity of the witness, because again, especially with a victim, we have to make sure that we don't have a child who is not telling the truth to us in an attempt to protect their parents. So we're going to go further, even if the victim is initially denying, but we need something more, we need some physical evidence. So, once the social worker has conducted that initial investigation and removed a child, up on your boards, you see the standard under Section 305 for removal from a parent, and this is what the law mandates that we must have. A social worker may take a child into temporary custody if they have reasonable cause to believe that a child first comes within any of the definitions of Section 300, as I've already mentioned, and, and this is important, the child is in immediate danger, and I've underscored danger, of either physical or sexual abuse, or the physical environment poses an immediate threat. This is why the investigation phase is so important, and that's why our social workers are so well-trained and they do what they do so well. Because what they gather in this initial investigation stage can absolutely make or break our case in court. It's also why we have come, and I know this board is well-aware, of the issues that we're looking at in terms of warrants these days. Because understand, as much as we need a legal foundation upon which to file a petition, we have to also, also ensure that throughout this process, parents' rights are protected. Parents continue to have their Fourth Amendment rights intact, their Fifth Amendment rights, and ultimately, their Sixth Amendment rights once they get into court. It is one of the reasons that we are, again, and I know this board is well-aware of that, seeking warrants on many of our cases. So, we now have a child in our custody. The time starts to run, the clock starts to run at that point, as Barry has mentioned before. We have basically 48 hours to finalize our investigation before we file that petition. We have a child in our custody, and the law really mandates at that point that the social worker must continue to investigate the circumstances and must release the child even during that investigation stage, after we have the child in our custody, unless, and the standard is, continued detention is a matter of immediate and urgent necessity. Again, this is all pre-court. So the clock is running, we have 48 hours to file our petition, and once that petition is filed, the parents have a right to have a detention hearing the very next judicial day. So now, we find ourselves in court, and I'm going to let Barry move that for me. Okay. Our first hearing is called a detention hearing, and Section 319 of the Welfare and Institution Code provides that the court shall release the child unless there are three things present. Number one, we have sufficient proof that the child comes within Section 300 of the WNI Code, like I've mentioned before. Number two, separate and apart, we must also prove that continuance in the home is contrary to the child's welfare. And number three, probably most important, we must prove that there is a substantial danger to the physical health of the child, or the child is suffering severe emotional damage, or has been sexually abused by someone in the home. Now, it's at this stage where the quality of that evidence that our social workers gathered becomes absolutely vital. And Barry, if you could move that one more for me. We're going to move on to our next hearing, which is the adjudication hearing. This is where the agency has the burden of proof. We have to be able to prove the content, the factual allegations in our petition, that's our charging document, much like a criminal complaint would be. We have factual allegations that we have to be able to prove are true to the court in order to make sure that that child is protected and removed from the family. That has to be based on credible, reliable evidence. It has to be based on evidence that's admissible in a court of law, and oftentimes, that becomes difficult when we have young children, because young children do not always qualify as witnesses, and that becomes a burden unto itself to see if we can qualify a very young witness, very young victim of either sexual or physical abuse. We can't prove our allegations specifically on hearsay, we must have more. On a physical abuse case, for instance, we are going to have statements by the victim about what their mother or father did to them. We're also going to have observations, somebody who saw the bruises. We're going to have photographs, we're going to have documentary evidence, obviously. And really important on a physical abuse case, we are going to need medical testimony because oftentimes, especially on a serious physical abuse case, the parents have told us that, oh, the reason that the child has a broken leg is because they fell off a couch. I can't tell you how many times I've heard that story. Okay? And so, what we need is we need more than a layperson's gut-level reaction to that to say, you know, I don't think that's possible. We need to have medical evidence to come in and refute what the parents are saying, to say, number one, that those injuries are nonaccidental, and number two, that the injuries to that child are inconsistent with the story by the parents. So very important on a physical abuse case. Similar on a sexual abuse case, we need a credible statement by the victim, we need oftentimes that forensic interview and forensic exam that Barry alluded to, that was done at the MDIC interview, which is a marvelous, marvelous tool in this county or any other county that has it. In an emotional abuse case, we need strong evidence that this child is suffering from some kind of severe depression, anxiety, aggression, and, most importantly, that there is a causal link to the parent's behavior. We can't just go out and remove kids because some child is, is suffering from severe depression. We have to be able to prove that it's a result of something that the parents are doing or not doing. So up on the boards, you'll see what the requirements are once we are at the jurisdiction hearing. Section 355, we have to be able to prove our petition, and then we have to go to a dispositional hearing, which is a separate requirement where we have to be able to show that that child is at such severe risk, we have to legally remove them from the parents. I'm going to move on.
Could I ask a question?
You sure may.
So you can find severe abuse and not remove a child unless you have a definite proof of who is doing it?
As far as physical abuse, it is possible for us, if we can prove that this is, again, let's say we have a doctor who's telling that this is a nonaccidental injury, this could not have happened as an accident, and that the story from the parents are inconsistent, we can physically remove from the parents, we don't necessarily in our court have to be able to prove that it was the mother or the father, if those parents are joint custodians, we may be able to remove from both. And I don't know if that answers your question.
It does.
Okay, good. Any other questions about this? Because I'm going to move on and very, very briefly talk about confidentiality.
This is very important, but, yeah, please.
Confidentiality, I know there's been a lot said lately that HSA is somehow hiding behind confidentiality. Nothing could be further from the truth because we are mandated under the law to protect the privacy rights of children, and that's really what the statute affords us in this area. The law about confidentiality is about protecting families, it's about protecting the privacy rights of children. WNI Code, Section 302, actually says the legal provisions of confidentiality are intended to protect the privacy rights of the child. Understand, as I said at the beginning on my presentation, one of the things that our system is all about doing ultimately is healing a family. Well, if we are going to expose these families to public scrutiny, public stigma, we are not necessarily going to encourage them to come forward and to engage fully in services and to disclose things that they might not otherwise disclose. That's another one of the purposes of confidentiality. Now, I want to talk briefly about Section 827, which is the sort of guiding light in our area about confidentiality. I know you are probably somewhat familiar with it because this is the section that sets out a specific list of persons to whom these kinds of records can be disclosed. For the most part, 827 provides people or entities that sort of work in the system, if you will, that provide a sharing of information so that we can, again, assist each other with helping families. The list includes, for instance, the attorneys for the child, the attorneys for the parents, the district attorney, the family law court with whom we oftentimes need to share information because there is kind of a joint jurisdiction that happens on these cases. That's what's provided in 827, and I recognize that your board is not on that list. I recognize that the grand jury is not on that list. That has been the way it's been for years, fortunately or unfortunately. In order to get information, if an entity or a person is not on that list, of course, Section 827 does provide for a petition process. The media can petition, the board can petition, any, any interested person essentially can petition the juvenile court. Now, there's a standard for that. The juvenile court does scrutinize these 827 petitions very, very carefully, and the legal standard is that if disclosure is not detrimental to the safety, protection, or physical or emotional well-being of a child who is directly or indirectly connected to the juvenile case, then the court will disclose portions if it sees fit of that juvenile file. Typically, what the court will do on these is also provide a protective order so that, for instance, if a person or entity wants to and can prove that they have an absolute interest in getting records, they are then forbidden by the court to further disclose that information to others. That's quite often comes along as part of that protective order. Okay? Any questions about confidentiality or 827 at all? I know there's been a lot of discussion about that issue, so I want to make sure your questions are answered.
No, I just want to make a statement after the presentation.
Sure, I will with that, then turn it back to you.
I do have, I just do have a question. I've had a chance to ask Barry, I'm just going to try to ask every professional. So in the case that has generated all of this, you feel confident that everybody that you've come in contact with in Child Protective Services has handled themselves properly and that they, there wasn't, there wasn't a missing step that could have caused this to be revealed sooner?
I was actually involved in, in some of the early process during the investigation stage, and this case was handled in an absolute exemplary manner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. And I'll just summarize, and it's, it's nice to see that the caliber that we have in the county that works with our system, as Patty reflects, and our other dependency attorneys exemplify that same professionalism, and so, it's, it's good to see that we have such a high level of competency and professionalism within our, our system itself. Let me just summarize, there's other slides in there, but I'll forego those for time and just, just conclude that the system itself that we operate in is not in isolation within HSA itself, that we have many, many components that interact with the court system, the juvenile court system, attorneys, both attorneys for us, for the child, for the parents, as well as law enforcement, are throughout the, the system here, providing inputs and activities in all, all levels that we participate in. It's a difficult environment and a difficult situation to deal with, and it, it takes a lot of effort and discretion, but the, the more that can participate and provide us guidance and input, the better we're able to perform. And I think that's very reflective here in, in the county. The other slides for your information, just deal with others, how, how peer reviews, how people have appeal rights within the system if they think they, they, not getting a fair review of their case and so forth, is all built into the system throughout, and we actively participate in it. We have multi-level checks within our own organization to, to assure that cases are properly reviewed and being managed and operated there, and you can see those. Finally, was that those cases that don't necessarily rise to the level in which a court is involved with or that we have formal plans around, we do have mechanisms to refer out into what we, we know as the pathways, activities to help families that may have issues, but issues that don't rise to the level that we would be intervening with. issues that don't rise to the level that we would be intervening with them there. And we have a significant number of partners and qualified professionals out there that are working with those families. Our preference is to enhance that within the community, that the network of providers can help intervene at the least level, meaning that at the first sign of trouble within a family, that there's resources available that they can go to and that they can get the intervention and help that they need in order to prevent it ever escalating to a level in which we would be participating in is the ultimate goal that we have as far as the responsiveness of our system. So I appreciate your time and consideration there. So if you have any questions, I'll take them.
Any questions for Mr. Zimmerman?
I do, and I heard you say you were going to ask the DA because I'm going to have questions for the DA. But I asked Patty the question. I'd just like to ask you publicly the question. You spent quite a bit of time on this case. As you look back on it, she used the reference that it was handled in an exemplary manner. No areas where we think that we made a mistake that could have revealed this sooner, is that?
That is correct. They did an excellent job, and it was reviewed at multiple levels throughout the entire process to do everything we could in that case.
And we just had a situation that the way the system is set up at this point in time, this wasn't going to be revealed until?
The system are a reflection of what actually occurs in these type of cases, and it's real, really more evident of the emotional and psychological situations around these type of abuse cases. There's even cases in which victims, after the fact, that are completely safe and the environment has completely changed and still have trauma and a fact that do not admit that anything occurred. So it is a very complex environment.
Thank you. And if you're going to, District Attorney?
Yes, I'd like to ask District Attorney Totten to step forward for any additional comments you'd like to add to this discussion.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair, members, Ms. Robinson. To address Supervisor Bennett's question right out of the chute, and let me be very, very blunt. This case that has generated this board's inquiry and a lot of media interest, in my opinion, is evidence of reason for praise of your Children and Family Services program, not condemnation. From our review of the case, children and family services workers were relentless in pursuing the truth in this case. And you have to look at these situations when you have child sexual abuse by a family member, in this case, an adoptive or a guardian parent. You have to look at the nature of the crime. Most of the crimes we prosecute occur, and there's not an issue that the crime occurred. If you've got a robbery, if you've got an assault, if you've got gang violence, if you've got a burglary or murder, there's no doubt on the part of law enforcement that that crime occurred. But when you have child sexual abuse, the nature of the crime is such that it occurs in secret. And it occurs in a relationship that is by no means equal. You have a dominant child molester that is controlling the victim and oftentimes threatening the victim, that provides care, sustenance, housing for that victim. And so they have the complete upper hand in that relationship. And the victim, it's a well-known documented sociological and psychological finding that many of these children suffer from what's called sexual abuse accommodation syndrome. And they will make up stories to not report. I mean, we're seeing nationwide, if not worldwide, instances where children that are abused decades in the past don't disclose until they become adults. And in fact, there are many people in our community, in our midst, that are adults, that are successful professionals, that are educated, that were molested years ago, that have never disclosed because of the embarrassment and the nature of these crimes. So what children and family services did in this case is they relentlessly pursued the truth. It was hard to get to. They had repeated denials from the victim. They had threats and intimidation by the perpetrator. They had denials by the victim's mother. They sought every bit of evidence they could obtain. They involved law enforcement. They consulted with law enforcement. There was actually an interview of the child by law enforcement. We filed, because of the aggravated nature of this crime and because of our desire to present it to the court that is going to sentence Mr. Martin, we filed a lengthy sentencing report that is a matter of public record. I shared a copy with Ms. Robinson that really details the long history of this case. And unfortunately, it is the reality of these types of crimes, that they're hard to get to the truth. And so, as I say, this case, I'm glad you're making an inquiry, but this case is a reason for praise of children and family services, not condemnation.
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. Mr. DA, I want to thank you, you know, for those comments because I had the opportunity to read the people of the State of California versus Martin. And everything that Barry mentioned, and is this available to the public?
It is.
I think this is important that people see this because I want to commend you and Barry's staff and the county council and child welfare procedures because you're governed by law. And exactly what you said, what was stated today by Barry, the training, eighty-five percent of our staff has master's degrees and the forty hours of continuing education, working with other agencies, police, and other publications, is extremely important. And if you read this report, exactly what Barry said and what the DA said is here, and the procedures that they follow for following, what is it, 827, it's extremely important, how the victim denied what's happening to them, and the perpetrator getting away with it. And if we don't work together as agencies and as partners in this whole thing, things fall through the cracks. But I think, after reading this report and hearing what Barry had to say and how we have very competent, very competent staff, very competent attorneys, very competent DAs.
Thank you.
And so forth, I think that, I think we're in good hands. Compared to other counties and compared to what we've done, I think Patty mentioned about protecting the safety of the child, the family, keeping the families together, finding a permanent home for them. How do we remove a child by law? And what are the rights, the constitutional rights for the perpetrator and for the victim? All those, I think, were well laid out. And I think that if anybody, if you want a copy of this, if that's okay, Mr. DA.
They can get it directly from the court.
It's a good example of the good work that the county does. And I just want to commend, you know, our staff and our police and the DA's office are doing an excellent job for the community. And this is one of the reasons I asked for it. I wanted to find what the procedures were, and this is just an outstanding work, and I just want to commend you for that.
Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Senator?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Yeah, I wanted to point something out. In education, the best teachers love to be evaluated. And, you know, as this, all of this swirled out there, I had this feeling from Child Protective Services that sort of like, we'd love to have people know what really happened. And so it's really, I think, a great help for the public to have this document from you that is much more specific than anything, you know, Barry was able to present to us today. He presents the general. And quite frankly, if it would have ended after that, I think my statement would have been, we'd all still be frustrated, yeah, but what happened in this case, right? But when you read this report, in November, this was this, this is what was asked, this is what the response was, that's exactly what we needed to hear, to know that. Now, so I really appreciate you putting this out, doing, you know, having the sentencing report and making it public like you did and when you did, and also being willing to stand up here and give the summary comments because the public needs to know, you know, is there something wrong? You know, on the surface, you see an abuse that lasts this long with this many allegations. It's at least a legitimate question to say, hey, was somebody blowing it? Was somebody asleep at the switch? Was this, you know, not good work by Child Protective Services? So it's really helpful to have you have the willingness to make the statements that you do. So my questions for you are, since teachers like good reports, or good teachers like to be evaluated as this happens in the future, are there any changes that you see that could be made in state law that would have made it easier for them? I think of some key spots in here. Could they have, you know, if we changed state law, could they have asked for a warrant earlier? Could they have done some other things to increase their ability to gather evidence beyond what they're legally allowed to do right now? When they sit there and they go, there's just been too many reports, our gut instinct is, we think we got it, we really need to have the right to do this, is anything that comes to your mind?
Well, with regard to DNA, obviously, once law enforcement has solid evidence that they can rely upon, we can go to a judge and get a court order to take DNA. And in this case, ultimately, had children and family services had enough evidence to present to law enforcement at an earlier time, they would have done that. They were trying to compel the defendant in the case to submit to paternity. They were trying to compel the victim in the case to file for child support and her mother to file for child support so we could get a paternity test. But I think this is an unusual case where you actually have a child conceived. It occurs, but it's relatively rare. I think giving them, giving children and family services more investigative tools to use in these cases, whether it's obtaining a court order under circumstances that might not meet the probable cause standard for a law enforcement search warrant, obtaining, compelling a physical examination under circumstances that might not otherwise meet it. Because my review of the case is the poor workers were incredibly frustrated because they knew something was going on and they couldn't get the goods on the perpetrator. So I think this might be an area where we should get maybe some better minds and mind together, along with children and family services, where we could actually come up with a proposal of, a comprehensive proposal of changes that would enhance our ability to get to the bottom line.
Thank you. My final question for you. Reading this report answered so many questions for me. And I think as this report goes to the public and to the press, that will answer so many questions for them. Does this report only, can we only get a report like this from you as a sentencing? In other words, you know, after the fact, after the perpetrator is caught?
The best?
What are the circumstances that these can happen? And it's just, you know, if I'm a good teacher, and I know that this may happen again to me as a good teacher, I'd want to make sure that somebody could get in and evaluate me and assure everybody that everything's okay. This was a way to do that. How constrained are we for this kind of report to have happen?
The confidentiality restrictions in this area of the law, for very good public policy reasons, are extensive. When the case winds its way into the criminal system, and I venture to say the vast majority of cases that Ms. McCourt deals with, who, by the way, is outstanding, I mean, she is an outstanding representative of the county in these cases, the vast majority of those cases never come to the district attorney's office because they don't rise to the level of criminal conduct. So the best answer I can give you is when we're in court with a case, we have a little more leeway, and you will note in reading that, we are very judicious in the way we handle the information about the victim, not to expose her name and things of that sort. But it's very limited what we can do. In a confidentiality setting of a grand jury or some other environment, we have a little broader authority, but it's a, the restrictions, I think your county council will tell you, are very great.
Thank you. Just a two-second follow-up question, you know, they're kind of asking a question here from the teacher and the student, to Barry. Barry can, and I'm sure maybe the other supervisor might want to ask the DA a question, but Barry, you know, you've done all this good work, you know, the eighty-five percent of the staff has masters and continue the education. Is there any way with, especially with the lean six sigma that we have, can we improve what we're doing? Or I'm sure we can. Or can you follow up on how can we improve the procedures and the protocols and so forth that our staff are doing? You're doing excellent work, but we can always improve on top of that.
Sure. We don't let the system lie dormant in the sense that we're not actively looking at how we can do things better. We do that consistently. A few months ago, we came before your board with the process improvement plan that we filed with the state. We have a plan that we filed with the state that sets goals and objectives every year on areas that we would like greater performance in achieving a higher level of outcomes. So we do that on an active basis, and we are using the tools of lean six that we are within the county to reassess and to generate greater outcomes.
And we're also studying what other counties are doing, other counties are doing so we can, you know, help each other.
Yes, we do. Through our association as well, we have Southern County consortiums and groups that we participate in, as well as statewide, that is really a best practices network that we talk and bring issues and share ideas in that. Yes?
You're doing excellent work, but we can improve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam CEO?
Yes, I just wanted to share a few thoughts relative to this. Thank you very much for the work you do in relation to trying to protect children. I think there's nothing more reprehensible than people who prey on children. And people who intentionally inflict pain on children for their own pleasure are particularly sickening, and it's frankly enraging. And guardians and parents who do so are particularly monstrous because the children suffer not only from the direct wounds, but the wounds of the betrayal. And it's really, really heart-wrenching. To paraphrase the words of our district attorney, there is often an impenetrable shroud of secrecy that surrounds the sexual abuse of children. And consider the difficulties of investigating a secretive crime that occurs predominantly behind closed doors in the privacy of one's home. And who shoulders the burden of uncovering these crimes, moving to protect children? Who gets to wade into this muck and mire of this dark side of our human activity? It's the CPS workers and the team that surrounds them in terms of pursuing safety for our children. Is it an easy job? No. I think you all have an appreciation of that after listening to this presentation. Is it a job that always gets immediate results that the CPS worker and the rest of the team believes is right? No. Is it a job that gets a lot of positive public recognition, prestige, and money? No. Is it a job that can be done disregarding parents' rights, state statutes, and the Constitution? No. So why do these women and men take on this burden? And I suggest, as it's been mentioned here, it's because they have a passion for protecting children. And when they cannot, when they suspect abuse and they cannot make a case, they are frustrated. Nobody, not the press, not the public, not the school officials, nobody is more distressed than the CPS workers, the attorneys, and the people who work on these cases. They know the cases, they suspect them, they're trying to make it work. I'm very proud of the work this team does. So thank you for your effort.
I really have nothing to add. I think it was an excellent, excellent presentation. I know it's certainly available, archived, and the public should, and those who interact with children should use this as a tool to really help us do our job better, to help these courageous Child Protective Service workers do their job better. It takes all of us to help to intercede there in the shroud of secrecy that occurs in these horrible, horrible cases.
Just a quick one. I also want to thank you for the thoroughness of the presentation and also appreciate District Attorney Totten and his offer to look at what can be done at the state level to make it so we don't have these obstacles in enforcing this. Thank you.
I don't believe the public speaking cards are on this item. I think they're on the item that will be heard by, in a minute, the other Human Services Agency item. So, yeah, sorry, that's okay. Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman, Ms. McCourt, Mr. Totten, all of you. You do outstanding work for us. Thank you. I appreciate it. Board members, I know we were going to move to the next items, but I have two, there are two timed certain items that, here in the Drug Court, we had Judge Coleman, but he had to leave. And so we've got, we're going to do those two items real quickly here, and that is to recognize, the first item is to recognize and proclaim May is National Drug Court Month. And I would invite Michael Planit up. And I would invite Michael Planet up. And as I just said, Judge Coleman just had to leave, I'm so sorry. But this is something we do every year. It is very important that we do this to recognize this month. It is celebrated across the nation, and the theme for this year is "All Rise," putting a drug court within reach of every person in need. And Drug Courts, as we have in this county, and we know now, and those that are there are existing in other parts of the nation, are the most effective tool for reducing substance abuse and crime in our criminal justice system. Five independent meta-analytic studies have concluded that crime can be reduced as much as 35% with the use of drug courts. And it's yielded evidence that drug courts improve the substance abuse treatment outcomes. And cost-benefit studies have found the average cost savings is anywhere from $4,000 to $12,000 per client, with a cost-benefit ratio as high as $3.36 for every dollar invested in drug court. For the past 21 years, drug courts have been restoring lives, reuniting families, making communities across the nation safer. This movement has grown from 12 original drug courts in 1994 to over 2,400 operational drug courts. They have proven themselves to be very effective. Ventura County Juvenile Drug Court was established in 1999, followed by the Dependency Drug Court for mothers in 2000. And by completing these drug court programs, mothers and adolescents have changed their lives, obtained insight and knowledge necessary to understand their addiction and to restore, use the coping tools to live clean and sober lives. Takes all of us, prosecutors, judges, defense attorneys, substance abuse and rehabilitation professionals, to enforce the laws and to provide community supervision and to support the families and the individuals who are going through their clean and sober path. And it is Thursday, May 20th, that marks National Drug Court commencement day, and there will be a graduation ceremony. It's always just so heartwarming to attend those. It's Ventura County, we'll be at 3:00 PM in courtroom 22. And we have graduates and their families. Since the Drug Courts was established in our county, 179 adolescents, 113 mothers have graduated. So it's my honor on behalf of the board to help proclaim this National Drug Court Month. And welcome Mr. Planet here, our court administrator, to make some comments. I'll step down to present the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes my report. Good morning, members of the board, Ms. Robinson. Only thing I would like to add to all the comments that Supervisor Lannister made is that the, this program and the success of our program here, and the historical success of our program is really due to a longstanding collaboration between the court and our county partners. And I would, I want to recognize HSA, Behavioral Health, the probation department, the district attorney's office, the public defender, public health, and even the Boomerang Campaign, which has contributed to our dependency drug court. And it's all the partners and the collaboration that we've had over the years that have made this program successful, and we thank you for your continued support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Judge Coleman sends his regrets. Unfortunately, he held his calendar until 10:30. Anyway, it's the last possible minute, but he'll be here next year, I promise. Thank you.
And again, for those who wish to be inspired, attend the day on May 20th. It just really is heartwarming. I'm going to do this next one from here, to move this along. It's Military Appreciation Month, and I would invite down Mike McManus, Veterans Services, and Brenda Manke. I don't know if she's here or not. Who's here? Oh, there. Okay. Okay, you're going to stand in for Mike. Okay, great. And I know that we have, I think Paul Grossgold was in the audience. There's Paul. Several board members of the Gold Coast Veterans Foundation, also supported with the sheriff and the DA. And this is all part of recognizing that May is Military Appreciation Month. And as we heard our chaplain speak this morning, she was wonderful, and she talked about being courageous and honest and really supporting, I think, what we do in this nation, and appreciation of our military and those who serve our country. The Gold Coast Veterans Foundation, Rhonda Nisa Greenwood, Patricia Westberg, and others are very active in supporting our military in this county. It is through the vigilance of members of the United States Armed Forces instrumental to the preservation of the freedom, security, and prosperity enjoyed by the people here in our county. We are very honored to have Naval Base Ventura County as part of our history and our tradition in this county. The values and principles that Americans have dedicated themselves to in service and sacrifice throughout the history of our nation encourages all residents of this county to appreciate the heritage of the United States Armed Forces. Residents of Ventura County who have served and continue to serve honorably in every branch of military service have learned skills and discipline that surpasses most. They've made them invaluable citizens in our community and in our own Ventura County as they've moved on to second careers and others. Ventura County is home to one of the largest concentrations of veterans in the nation, represented by 54,000 individuals. In service to our local veterans, a partnership between the State Department of Veterans Affairs and the United States Department of Veterans Affairs brought about the completion of the William J. Pete Knight Veterans Home, which we all celebrate the dedication on December 4th of the ribbon cutting of that veterans' home right here in our county. This new facility provides 60-bed residential care for veterans 62 years and older, and full quality services that really help those veterans as their needs are being met. We're proud that this new facility is here, and it really does provide those final years for veterans with great dignity and honor. So on behalf of the board, I'll present this proclamation declaring Military Appreciation Month as May 2010. And I thank you, and invite you all to attend this. We love you. We love the board. Thank you.
Madam Chairperson, Mrs. Robinson, members of the board. My name is Marissa Mock, and I'm actually a senior program manager for HSA and Veterans Services as one of my programs. But our county Veterans Services Officer, Mike McManus, wanted to be here, but he had to be at the airport at a certain time, so unfortunately, he's not here. But I'm here on his behalf to let you know that our Veterans Services Office is here to very proud to serve our veterans of Ventura County, partnering with the state and federal levels of Veterans and Affairs, as well as other partners throughout the county. And in fact, we have one of our beloved partners, the administrator for our new veterans' home here in Ventura. Brenda?
Yes, very proud of it. Madam Chairperson and board members, thank you for inviting us here today. This is a great works, and it took over 17 years to open the home. January of this year, we opened the home. Currently have 17 residents residing there, male and female. Our great veterans served our country, and now it's our time to serve them. Also on the same path, we've also opened our home to employment for those in the Ventura County area. Currently, we have 54 employees, and that will expand to approximately 110. Many of the employees that are working at the home were displaced at the closing of some of our medical facilities in the past, and it's just my pleasure to be able to open our home and bring those community members back to the county of Ventura. So thank you.
Could I ask all those in the audience who are veterans, please stand? Would like to recognize you.
We'll take a picture.
I just want to note that our former director, George Compton, is here also.
Yes, yes. George, good to see you. Let's turn around here, and we'll take a photo. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you, Mark. Okay, now, let's move to item, Mr. Zimmerman.
And we have to make a motion to receive and file the original report there, item 23, so can the clerk go to 23 while she's walking back, so we can make a motion on that? Yeah, there's a motion to receive and file. Second. Okay, great. And if I could just explain, some of you turned in cards for item 23. It's really item 31 that we're combining with item 23, and so we're there now.
All right. Welcome. This is item 31, which is a request to, for additional staff associated with Children's Family Services, in particular, associated with a specific function within the system itself. And this deals with that recent court cases have kind of reshaped our procedures and protocols as it relates to investigations that Patty alluded to in her presentation of warrants and getting the warrant process here. It is necessary for us now to seek warrants and to seek them in a most expeditious manner in order to allow us to conduct our interviews without interrupting the flow or process in our work to investigate both referrals that are immediate need as well as, or imminent as well as those that are in-person 10-day reviews. So what's before you is the staffing for that unit that we think would provide us the ability to file warrants and receive those in a timely fashion.
Okay. Other questions?
The, just to characterize, this, if we didn't do this, it would be harder for us to do investigations, correct?
That's correct.
So it's absolutely essential for us to have investigations as a result of new rulings about how we have to do warrants.
That's correct.
Great, just want to be clear on that.
Okay.
Move the recommended action on, what's that?
We have speakers on this one?
All right, just the speakers. Okay, great.
We have speakers on this one. Okay.
All right, well, then, all right, we're going to have the speakers. Barry, if you could come back, please. Right. The speaker's going to talk about what was originally going to be part of this item and is no longer a part of the item. So I just want to try to be clear and clear for the benefit of the speakers. Last week, when I was leaving town, we had conversations about this item. And about six weeks ago, or two months ago or so, I had indicated to you that I had attended an event at Sheridan Way School, and that their healthy schools, the program that they have there.
The health, the school-based health clinic.
The school-based health clinic, yeah. We had been a partner with them for quite some time, and we had provided a social worker for quite some time there, and then that social worker was cut. And I talked with you about, I'm interested in trying to restore that social worker there, and what was the best way for me to go forward. One possibility was for me to bring an item forward. You had mentioned that you were coming forward with a number of items, and that you were happy to have that be a recommendation that came from you. And so that's how things were left as of Wednesday. So for the benefit of the people in the audience, and for the benefit of the board members, I contacted the people of Ventura Unified School District and said, "Hey, great, Barry has decided to put this as part of his board letter to make this request for half of this." No question, you know, at my request urging, but I was happy to do it myself if it was not appropriate for Barry to be able to do that. And so we tried to make sure, since they wanted to come and speak to it, we said, "Well, I'll make a request that we hear it at the same time that we hear this 9 o'clock item," which is why we're hearing item 31, you know, right after we heard our 9 o'clock item. Between, in the interval, while I was out of town at the end of last week, miscommunication or whatever communication between your office and CEO's office, that recommendation isn't here any longer. And my understanding is that CEO's office not recommending that you be the one, you know, that you be the one making recommendations in terms of this. I still think it's an appropriate item. I know one of our issues, one of the reasons why I originally was not scheduled to be here today, but that I had, in talking with you, I said, "I will come back for this meeting on the 11th, because you aren't going to carry this item at all, the five social workers or this," without having the full board here in the presence. So I came back early thinking that this item was going to be on. My office was contacted late on Friday about this change in this item, and I didn't get the information until certainly after 5:00 on Friday when this is filed. So I'm going to be still recommending that this action go forward. I realize it's not part of yours, but it strikes me that it is at least timely for us to talk about it and see to what extent the board may be supportive of this as we go forward. So we need to set that setting before we hear the speakers from the school district who are here as a result of that. So I think that probably is an important setting there for us, before we hear the speakers from the school district. Thank you very much.
Are there any questions prior to that? Okay, we will go to our speakers then. First up, Barbara Fitzgerald.
Thank you. Good morning. 15 years ago, I stood before this board as the Director of Human Services Agency and asked for several positions for the Healthy Start Program, one of which was a social worker assigned to the Sheridan Way School. We were looking at multiple sources of funding, and one of the things that we discovered quite quickly was that this was not a case-carrying worker. This was a worker that was a liaison between multiple services that the county offered, multiple services that the community offered, and the school district, and the parents and the children. One of the things that we also discovered through a research project that was under Dr. Chris Landon, was that it dramatically reduced the number of children in that specific area entering the system. And when you heard about the system, if we can keep children and families safe, working together, healthy, isn't that much better than bringing them into a system where we investigate them and ultimately remove them from their families? If we can make a stop before that, I think we all win. So I would encourage your board to think about increasing a position or a contract position in whatever way you choose to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Debbie Golden?
Good morning. I'd really like to thank Supervisor Bennett and Mr. Zimmerman for bringing this item forward, and for the entire board for considering it. The Ventura Integrated Resource Initiative Partnership has been working collaboratively for over two years to expand the Sheridan Way Family Center into a full school-based health center, or a one-stop shop to access primary care and preventative health services, as well as mental health and social service assistance to the children and their families of the Avenue area. We appreciate the partnership of the school district with the healthcare agency, human service agency, probation, behavioral health, FIRST5, and many other agencies and CBOs that recognize that placing prevention and early intervention services at a school that parents trust makes sense. We are working diligently to make this center a reality in our near future. The social worker is the most integral position at the family center. Coordinating casework for the children has been a real struggle since the social worker position at Sheridan Way Family Center was cut due to lack of funding. We believe that restoring the social worker position to the family center will benefit the children and their families greatly and go a long way towards the success of our project. Thank you again for your consideration. I'd like to just introduce Sheila Ray's, a school nurse with Ventura Unified, Kathy Puchetti, the Director of the Ventura Neighborhoods for Learning, and Susan Everhart, the Principal of Sheridan Way, who are here in support this morning as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Trudy Ariaga?
Good morning, Madam Chair, and board members, and Ms. Robinson. First and foremost, I just want to thank you for your service to our counties. We would ask that you formally consider the restoration of the social worker. I'm currently Superintendent of the Ventura Unified School District, but two decades ago was the proud principal of Sheridan Way Elementary School, and during those times had the extreme honor of working collaboratively with the agencies that were suggested in the past to speakers. And it was from about 1993 until approximately 2005 that we enjoyed a social worker on that campus. And I believe that the social worker is in direct alignment with the presentation that was presented to the board this morning in terms of child welfare and protective services for our children. We also, during those times, were extremely proud of the results that we were able to achieve, and that included academic increases, attendance increases, parental involvement increases. But one of the results in which we were most proud and was directly correlated to the social worker was that we had data that showed there were reduced reports to HSA and reduced out-of-home placements in the 93001 attendance area of Sheridan Way. Very, very significant data. And so it's two decades later, and it was in 2005 that the social worker was cut, but we have done our very best to continue the services of a family social worker was that we had data that showed there were reduced reports to HSA and reduced out-of-home placements in the 93001 attendance area of Sheridan Way, very, very significant data. And so it's two decades later, and it was in 2005 that the social worker was cut, but we have done our very best to continue the services of a family center. I would like to share with you that the district provides approximately $125,000 in resources to this proposal, from the actual center itself to the infrastructure of the center. We have two beautiful rooms at Sheridan Way that have been designated. Also, the clerical staff as well as the coordinator is all funded in partnership, but through the funding sources available to the Ventura Unified School District. So in closing, I would just like to say the Ventura Unified School District is committed to partnering with governmental bodies such as yourself, our agencies, and community partners to provide access to all families that we are so privileged to serve on our West Side community of Ventura. So thank you for your consideration of the restoration of this position.
And thank you for your comments. No further cards, back to the board.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, for this opportunity. A few things I'd just like to point out. As one, this isn't a new program that we're just starting. This is a restoration of a program that we had been supporting for some significant amount of time. It is a unique program, and I think that both Debbie Golden and Trudy Ariaga said it very well, when they said it's consistent with the very things that we had heard about before. Barry, when we were talking about the Child Protective Services, used this exact quote. He said, "Our ultimate goal is for parents to have resources available at the first sign of trouble." Now, that's an ambitious goal for us to have throughout all of Ventura County, and some people may say, you know, do this everywhere, but we have a partnership, and we have a school district that is putting up substantial resources of their own to try to make this dream come alive. And they approached us quite some time ago, I think it was in 2003 that we first launched this. They approached us in 2003, and they said they would pay for the coordinator, they would pay for some of their things, and would we come forward with some help? And we had offered the social worker. It is a critical time. Congresswoman Lois Capps was at the center, talks about if we can bridge the gap and we can get a few years down the road, there may be more federal funding to help centers like this. And so that's why I think it is so appropriate that we go forward. We are getting some help from the school. It is the only, it's the only example of this going on in the country, and it's not a new program we're restoring. I would like to read from the report that was going to be filed to us so that you can see how the HSA was referring to this report before it was modified. And that was, "Expanding this model by placing a halftime contract social worker in high-needs areas of Ventura Unified School District is recommended as Ventura has high areas of high incidence of child abuse and neglect. Authorizing this additional school-based contract social worker support will help strengthen families so that more children live in safe, stable, and permanent homes nurtured by healthy families and strong communities." And then it goes on to talk about how this is consistent with how they move forward. This is the exact wording that came from how this was. "The total program cost for this contract service is estimated at $45,000, of which $22,500 is from the agency's wraparound reinvestment funds and $22,500 county net cost." So for a county net cost of $22,500, we can restore a halftime social worker to a program that I know is struggling financially, as all school districts are at this point in time. We can restore that and continue the partnership, I think that has been so successful for the benefit of our, benefit of our citizens out on the Avenue. So I'd like to pass this down, just so the board members can see it's page five. What I read to you was the third to the last paragraph and the fourth to the last paragraph in reference to this particular report. You can, if you want, you can see on page four, it talks about the Sheridan Way side of that also. So with that, I would like to add this to the motion, the $22,500 net county cost, but the .5 FTE contract social worker to the Ventura Unified School District. And I believe that in this report, it was recommended for two years, coming from the same funding sources, that would be contingency. And it was, this report was asking for it to be for a two-year period of time and allow us to sort of see where we are and see where the federal funding is at that point in time. So my motion would be the recommended actions for item 31 and include the halftime contract social worker for the Ventura Unified School District with the funding as recommended.
There's a motion?
So the total instead of 125, then would be 147?
For net county cost?
Right.
Well, for net county cost, it'd be 147,885 plus 22,500. I won't try to do the math here on the dials.
We have a question from County Council?
Actually, a statement, Madam Chair. I don't believe doing this would be in accordance with the Brown Act. The agenda notice specifically limits the action to compliance with the case of Green versus Camretta. And I don't think this would really fit within the scope of the Brown Act notice.
Because in the original board letter, there was a reference to Sheridan Way in the subject line, and you're saying that's not in there now. I would like to point out that there are some, there are some reasons why there was some urgency to come to this meeting, and that is because next week, the 18th, the budget is being presented, and that's part of why Human Services Agency was interested in getting this and getting this into contingency funding. I would also point out that if I would have been informed that this wasn't going to be in here before Friday afternoon, I would have been able to submit my own letter as late as Friday, correct? And then we would have been able to do this item at this point in time. So for us to do this item, I could re-agendize this item for next week's board meeting, correct?
Certainly. Or you could instruct staff to bring it back the next board meeting or at time of your choosing.
Right. But, all right.
Counsel, could the recommendation, if the board so chooses, be just to include it in the final budget?
Yes. If the, if the board wished to instruct the CEO to do that, yes, that would be appropriate.
So why is that appropriate if it wasn't agendized?
Because you're just giving an instruction to staff to do something in the future rather than actually acting on approving the matter.
All right.
And the Brown Act permits instructions to staff.
All right. So if our instructions as a staff is to take it out of the contingency for this year?
No, I don't think so, because then you're taking an action to move money, for example. That wouldn't fly.
I think it's basically general fund. You're wanting the 2250s from general fund, so however we can make that happen.
So the-
What you want to do is instruct staff to return to you with a proposed action.
Well, this action here, I think part of what HSA was interested in was having this come out of contingency so that it would be part of the funding, ongoing funding as the budget is built for next year. So I would like to then make the motion that we direct staff to have this item be part of the budget with the funding being ongoing funding for the next two years as was originally recommended.
In addition to the main motion.
In addition to the main motion. So is that a legitimate motion for us?
Yes.
Great.
The auditor has a question?
I'm a little concerned. I think it's a little awkward, the deviation that we are now seeing from past practice to introduce budgetary items before we have a preliminary budget in front of the board. So for items 31 and 32, I have no problem to recognize that the CEO is being asked to include the allocations in the preliminary budget for your board's consideration. I'm concerned when the discussion portion talks about post-preliminary process and to adjust a budget that isn't, hasn't been approved by the board yet. We don't have a preliminary budget yet. So if the CEO would include your board's action today in the preliminary budget, that would be what, the budget that would be reflected on the financial system on July 1.
Can I counsel? Is that your read that we're?
Well, I don't have any problem with what the auditor controller said, and I'm no expert on budgeting. My understanding of what you, your proposed motion is, is to instruct the CEO to repair the budget for fiscal year 10, 11, to include this, this item in it, this halftime social worker. And from a legal perspective, that's fine.
And I have no problem with that wording, as long as it's included in the preliminary budget or comes in to the final budget hearings. My issue speaks more to items 31 and 32, where that instruction isn't carried the same way.
We can make that happen. Mechanically, we can make that happen. The process is, we have a preliminary budget, that's pretty much put to bed because we can't make a lot of adjustments. We have to have a close-off at a certain point in time with the preliminary budget. We'll be coming on June 8th with the preliminary budget. Between the preliminary budget drop-dead date and the final budget hearings on June 21st, we make a number of what we call post-preliminary budget adjustments. What we'll do is we'll include any decision your board wants to make as far as including or excluding items from, you know, taking out of that next year's contingency, we can make that happen. We would do it during, as an item of your, in your approval, of a post-preliminary adjustment that would adjust the preliminary budget at that time, and so the budget will include it as your board deliberates. We'll generally hand out a piece of paper that says, hey, here's all our post-preliminary adjustments and this number, these numbers will be included in that, and going forward, it'll be adopted by your board.
How will that be different than if, in fact, the board letter, the current board letter of HSA would have included this in this funding?
No difference. From our standpoint, no difference, because it's going for next year. If you try to appropriate it in the current fiscal year, it comes out of contingency, it's not spent in the current year, it drops back to the fund balance. We need to spend it in the current year, it wouldn't happen in the current year. It's for a next-year project, we'd have to take it out in next year's contingency.
But we are taking some money out of this year's contingency for these recommendations?
No, no, it's starting next budget year, I believe that the, July 1 is the date of the employees, that effective date, and it's going forward for next year.
Contingency.
Yes.
So this would be, this will be, this position will be funded like these other positions?
That's correct. So if your board decides you want to make that direction, we'll make that happen in what we call the post-preliminary budget at that point.
Well, I don't know that there's a distinction with the difference here between making this position, adding this to this motion, or giving staff the direction, but if that satisfies County Council from a Brown Act standpoint, and the position is going to be funded exactly the same way as these other positions, but we're doing it by making it a direction instead of something else, I just want to make sure we get the position. So I'm happy to make that motion, if we said that properly from County Council's standpoint. So the motion is to approve the recommended actions and also instruct staff to add the halftime social worker to Ventura Unified School District out of contingency, the idea being that be a two-year, two-year funding cycle. Thank you. So that's the motion. Thank you.
There's a motion and a second. Motion and a second, any further questions on that? Okay, let's vote.
And thank you for making it happen, Pa. You can make it happen mechanically.
And I do want to emphasize, I've been happy to carry this myself. I told Barry that when we first met, I've been happy to carry this myself, and I've been happy to have even put it on as an agendized item last week if I would have known that it was, did change.
That passes for zip here, for one effort. All right, I know we got to go quick here. I would like to, if we can, is 32 a quick one, Mr. Zimmerman? We're gonna do 32, and then we're going to go back to what I believe to be a second read item that should not take long and get that done before Air Pollution Control District. We pray for that, and that's item 26. Mr. Zimmerman, talk.
Thank you. I'll make this as quick as possible. General relief is an obligation of the county under the Welfare Institutional Code 7000 to provide aid for indigence. That caseload, due to economic times, has skyrocketed, fourfold, in where we are today, and we're requesting staff so we can manage that caseload and also bridge the link to Social Security for those that are disabled so that they can be removed off of the county's obligation, and we being reversed for the period of time that we case-manage them. That's what's being proposed, similar fashion to the previous item.
That certainly speaks to what we're seeing as a result of the economy and a variety of things, because we've done such a great job for years with our GR program, so continue to do a great job. Okay. Questions? Oh, I'm, yeah, okay. There's a motion and a second. Is there a second? There is. Everybody vote?
I'm sorry, I do have a question.
Sure.
I apologize. This is to assist with people who are unemployed, correct? And my question is, we're starting to see a change in the economy, at least from the headlines, that are showing that more people are starting to feel optimistic and looking for jobs again and getting out there, and that more people are getting jobs. And the question I have is to, if we can make these limited-term positions in light of the fact that, you know, if we are, you know, we've seen the worsening economy and as the papers are showing that it's starting to turn, that we may not need these for long term?
At your pleasure, we can do that. I would say that as far as the population that we're dealing with here, that it's not probably, if we have a rebound in unemployment, they are probably going to be a lagging population in that employment statistic. So a period of time, if we could do the fixed term, that's fine. You know, 24 months to three years is our standard.
That would be my preference, instead of these permanent ones.
That's fine. So three years is our typical threshold for fixed term, and we can come back and report at the end of that time period on how the program's working.
Then I would request that we amend the motion, and we'll go first.
Is the maker of the motion, agreement with that?
He made the motion.
Mr. Derek Olson?
I'd rather bring it down to 24 months. I was thinking one year, but if you say it's 24 to 36, I'd rather bring it down.
24, how about?
All you have to do is come back before, is that what's something?
Yeah, at the end of 24, we can come back and discuss where we are in the program.
I mean, if it goes away at the end of 24, then before that, you come up and say what you can do or something like that.
We'll report back before the 24.
Yeah, I think that would be prudent.
All right.
And hopefully, it's not optimistic either.
Okay, so again, the motion, the second, agreement with that, 24 months? You know, I certainly support it. I also think that yearly, you stand before us and talk about your budget, and you're the one who's got to make sure ends meet. So I expect we would have had the same opportunity, but if that's the desire, we'll move ahead on the vote. And everyone, got it? We're gonna adopt the recommended actions with making fixed terms for two years. And that passes?
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. I know APCD, you're waiting, we got one quick one, one quick one, board members. We did not do a file and reaction of receiving file on item 23. We did. Thank you, Robert, I thought we did. Okay, then we're up now to Mr. Nicole, so that our folks, our friends can leave here. Mr. Nicole?
Madam Chairman, members of the board, Mrs. Robinson, today is the second reading of the proposed amendment to the agreement with the Ventura County Deputy Sheriffs Association and the county. As presented to you last week and indicated in the detail, this provides for the deputy sheriffs who have received a, have a two-year contract, they have opened that contract, taken a 1% raise that they were given, and gave back to the county by picking up 1% of their retirement as of May 2nd. They have also agreed that in the second year, they will give an additional 1.5% of their retirement, which is a 1.5% for a total now of 2.5 of total compensation. their retirement, which is a 1.5% for a total now of 2.5 of total compensation contribution for retirement. In exchange for that, that contract is extended to the year 2012, to November of that year, at their option, and they have that option to, I mean, the option to go from 2012 to pick up 2013, a third year. As I said, this is something that hasn't happened previously, it was an effort where the deputy sheriffs came forward to help us address the issues related to our losses and costs related to the pension, and they did so. It also includes that new hires will pick up 4% of their retirement for the first five years of their employment. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you have regarding this matter.
Any questions?
No questions, but I do want to say I appreciate the hard work from both sides of the Sheriff's Association and the county to making this work, and for making, and being a team player to make it work for all of us together, so thank you guys very much.
Yeah, and to herald the unprecedented effort that has been made here, that, as you were saying, some 30-some years you haven't seen, so, thank you.
You did all the kudos last, last week on this thing, so...
And thank you to the deputies again. Thank you for the good work.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Please vote. And that is now adopted, and we thank you for the cooperation on that, thank you so much. All right, I know that we have a 10 o'clock time certain that we have yet to do, we'll do it when we come back after APCD and the rest of the agenda. Sorry, folks, but such is life. Okay, we're going to break now for Air Pollution Control District Board meeting. Okay, thank you, and the board's back in session now to pick up the rest of our agenda. We're going to start with item 25, which is Water Awareness Month. Supervisor Zaragoza.
Yeah, thank you so much, Madam Chair, you know, the, I have a resolution here from the Board of Supervisors proclaiming the month of May as Water Awareness Month. And whereas water is California's most precious natural resources, Ventura County is located in a semi-arid climate region with limited water supplies, where waterfall averages way below the normal for a number of years, and we have Pacala there going for this, the governor has declared a statewide drought in California, and imported water supply has been affected by a judge's decision to protect a threatened fish species, and due to this limited supply, the Metropolitan Water District has served all of Southern California, has mandated a 15% reduction in water use. Whereas implementation of long-term measures to combat drought and preserve our water resources remain a priority, and whereas local water purveyors throughout Ventura County have enacted voluntary and mandatory water use reductions and allocations, conducted residential and commercial water audits, sponsored school education, ultra-flow toilets, giveaways, rebate programs, in an effort to promote water conservation, the county and local water purveyors have a responsibility to inform the public regarding the use of water efficiently. Whereas the County of Ventura joins the Ventura County Watershed District's number 1, 16, 17, 19, Lake Sherwood Community Service District, to increase water understanding of water and to make conservation a way of life. Whereas the month of May 2010 has been designated statewide as Water Awareness Month, and the theme of the 2010 campaign is Water as Life, underling, Water as Life. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Ventura County hereby proclaim May 2010 as Water Awareness Month, and urges all the county residents and all local water agencies to join in the efforts to use water wisely, water as life. And this is presented to Mr. Pacala on the 11th day of May, and I'll walk down to give you that.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Long, Supervisor Zaragoza, members of the board, Mr. Carroll. Ready Pacala with Water and Sanitation Department of the Public Works Agency, we appreciate your board to taking time on a busy day like this and declaring May as a Water Awareness Month. Since 1989, May has been declared the Water Awareness Month in California, and this is a time when water usage, especially for exterior water usage, goes up. Therefore, it's important that we remind all our customers that we should be using water very wisely. Three years of drought and a very mild El Nino this year is not going to help us fill all the water supply reservoirs that we need to have them filled. Due to the ongoing drought, as Supervisor Zaragoza mentioned, pumping restrictions placed by a federal judge have caused water restrictions in entire Southern California, and it is more important than ever before that all of us need to conserve water year, around the year, and make this a conservation or way of life. Metropolitan, as mentioned previously, has implemented a 15% water reduction for this fiscal year, and we were recently notified that Metropolitan will implement 15% for next fiscal year also. So this is very important for all of us to reduce our water usage so that we don't have to pay any penalties to Metropolitan, and help us to achieve the goal of the reduction that Metropolitan is requiring. With that, I'd like to thank your board for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I'd also like to share that not only is Mr. Pacala doing a good job with water, and also with wastewater, we're almost done over in the El Rio district, you know, and converting, you know, from septic tank to, to the City of Oxnard sewer system, we're down to two systems, and continues to do a good job, and, and continues to do a good job in, in water conservation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Pacala.
Thank you.
Conservation is a way of life.
Actually, Oak Park has all its landscaping is irrigated with reclaimed water, so it's nice, and it's beautiful landscaping. And their medians, I was just commenting about Oak Park, and their medians are all irrigated with reclaimed water, as well as the schools.
Yes, they are.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, board.
Thank you. All right, item 33 is adoption of a resolution for our trans. Mr. Dursley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Paul Dursley from the County Executive Office. On April 20th, we requested your board authorize us to issue trans for this year, and we promised we'd be back with the legal documents, and here we are. So the only thing that's different, this is relatively perfunctory as far as legal documents, however, new this year, since we are doing a competitive sale rather than a negotiate sale, we have a couple new documents, and those are the notice of intention to sell notes. We will notify, hopefully, a lot of potential buyers that we're going to be issuing notes, and then the official notice inviting bids, which will, will come back in to us, to our attorneys and outside consultants, and we'll determine what the best bid is. So other than that, if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them, but other than that, we'll go forward with the, with our issuance of the trans. We expect, right now, it's, we're estimating it to be 131 million, we had authorization for 160 million, and out of the 131 million, 125 million of that is for prepayment for retirement contributions. So relative to the overall funding, only $6 million of the entire issuance is going toward general fund and family of funds cash flow needs for the first six months of the year, which is actually relatively good from our standpoint, from a cash flow standpoint. We're in reasonably decent position this, at this time.
Nice question. With the 125 million prepaying, the retirements, are you saying?
Yes.
What does that save us to prepay?
They give us a discount of 3.86%. So in, on 100, let's, I'll make it easy, $100 million, it's 3.8 million dollars, they discount that. Really, it's an 8% discount, because they discounted at their 8% actuarial rate, however, it's, the way it's calculated, they're getting, they would get it normally over the first six months anyway, so it calculates out about, about half of that amount, a little less than half of that 8% actuarial rate, which is the 3.86% discount rate.
That's great. Good.
Okay, any other questions? Action on item?
Give word, Pa.
Yep. Motion to adopt in a second. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Item 34, appointment in lieu of election.
Members of the board, Madam Chair, Mr. Carroll, my name is Scott Powers with the county CEO. The item before you today is to receive the recommendation by the review panel from Mr. Douglas Nelson, to Ventura County Resource Conservation District's Board of Directors in lieu of election, representing Division 2, on scheduled vacancy term expiring November 2012. Happy to answer any questions?
Any questions? I'd move the recommended action. And a second. Please vote. Passes unanimously, thank you. Item 35. Supremoire Watershed Protection District, Ms. Camacho.
Thank you. Good afternoon, good morning, actually. For the record, my name is Norma Camacho, Director of the Watershed Protection District, and I'm here today for your board to receive and file both the justification and associated projections for our fiscal year 11 benefit assessment for the district. And again, upon approval of today's recommendations, we will be setting a hearing for June the 8th, and this will be a public hearing. Again, our total revenues for this year that we are projecting for the program is approximately 11.8 million dollars. And the programs to be funded through this benefit assessment include our standard O&amp;M costs for all of the flood control facilities throughout the district zones, to supplement our flood damage repair reserves, as well as to provide funding for our NPDS program, both the city programs and the principal peremptive program. And revenues that are going to be transferred to the cities for their NPDS program use is approximately 1.65 million dollars. And of that, the district will net approximately 10 million dollars, which is about a little less than a third of our projected revenues for the district for fiscal year 11. For NPDS responsibilities, the district will be assessing about 1.43 million dollars, and then 7.8 million of the assessment will go through our, to our O&amp;M activities, as well as 890,000 to, for our flood damage repair reserve. And again, the assessment rates and methodologies have not changed over the years, it remains the same, and this way we do not invoke the requirements under Prop 218. And at this point, I'll pause and ask if the board has any questions regarding our assessment.
Are there any questions? Okay, there was a revision for the exhibit provided to all of us?
Yes.
Right. Okay. Motion, in a second, to adopt the recommended action. That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, and that will set the public hearing for June 8th. Item 36, cooperative agreement between US Forest Service and Ventura County Sheriff's Department. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, fellow board members. Ms. Robinson?
I am here requesting the board to authorize the chair to sign the attached modification to the Cooperative Law Enforcement Agreement between the US Forest Service and the Ventura County Sheriff's Department. For the past several years, we've had an agreement with the US Department of Agriculture and Forest Service to assist them, and this is part of recouping our costs and assisting them on the forest lands due to illegal activity occurring in the national forests. We will be coming before your board during the 2010-11 fiscal year to request the appropriations and the anticipated revenue per this agreement.
Okay, any questions? I have a motion, second, to adopt the recommended action. And that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Item 37, this is to submit a grant, fiscal year emergency management performance grant.
Maybe I can step up? We are asking for the board to authorize the Sheriff's Department to submit a grant application to the California Emergency Management Association, requesting up to 269,381 dollars. Each federal fiscal year, the Emergency Management Performance Grant Program, and this request enables us to apply for these funds.
It's on the board's agenda, because it's more than $100,000.
There's a motion, in a second, to adopt the recommended action. It's always good to get these grant dollars. And that passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, board members, we're back to board comments, because we didn't complete those, so I'm going down to Supervisor Zaragoza.
Yes, Madam Chair, you know, I'd like to adjourn in memory of this individuals on my list, and I'd like to call out Mary Gray. Mary Gray was the wife of Tony Gray, and Tony Gray, you know, was, first of all, I went back up a little bit, you know, she came to the United States from Guam in, in 1959, at the age of 16. She had a business in Oxnard, Mary Gray's Hair Incorporated, and I just wanted to share that, because Tony Gray was, is a well-respected community leader in, in Oxnard, Ventura County, so I just wanted to bring that to, to your attention also. He, she had three children, and I just wanted to share that, would like to adjourn in her memory also. In addition to that, you know, I had the pleasure Saturday of presenting two resolutions to, to Eagle Scouts in Oxnard, and when I got there, and I got to the parking lot of the church there on H and Ivywood, and I looked at the resolutions, and I thought that Ludas, my assistant, had made a mistake, because it was Aaron and Erin. And, and I looked at it, and it was Aaron Duarte and Erin Gonzalez, you know, so, so the only difference was that one Erin had two As and the other one had one A, so we made them Erin one and Erin two. But it was a real pleasure to be there to, to give these resolutions to our young men, and as I always said, and I mentioned there before, those are the type of individuals that should be in the front page of our newspapers, of all the good things they do, opposed to the 0.5% of the individuals that do bad things for, for, in, in our community. So 99.9% of our kids do good kids, and it's just an honor to, to be there to give these resolutions. And also to share with you that our senior summit is coming along pretty good, we're going to have it on June the 12th at Oxnard College in three languages, and we're getting set for that, and of course, we're all excited too, because we're going to have our Board of Supervisors meeting in Oxnard on the 25th. So I understand we're going to have a full house there at the, at the council chamber, so, and we're going to be on TV too. So that's all I have to share. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Bennett.
To ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list, and welcome everybody back after Mother's Day, and hope everybody's in good shape.
Okay, thank you. I too have a, two folks to, I'm going to submit, to adjourn in memory of, out of Camarillo, and submit that for the record. A couple of quick things to talk about, one is that Santa Paula is just making great leaps forward on successful distribution of the OK Help signs in Santa Paula. They had a tremendous turnout from the community, the project is being worked through with the Santa Paula Citizens Corps Council, had more than 125 students and about 25 adults sign up and participated, and they distributed flyers to 6,800 homes and businesses, so we're on the map, Mr. Bennett. And I would also like to, as, just, I should have mentioned this last week, but didn't, but it's, it's still timely, to say that as the Chair of EPC, that May 8th was National Animal Disaster Preparedness Day. I want you all to remember your pets when you plan for disasters, and there's great things, you can go online at ready.gov and get all kinds of information of how to make sure your pet, your buddy, is taken care of during disasters, and that's our theme this year with the... this year with EPC. And following disaster themes, I had the opportunity to welcome folks for the annual Ventura County Behavioral Health Trauma Conference, and May is Mental Health Month, and the, and the speaker was talking about trauma, current topics and treatment. He was outstanding, John Buerre. He's a doctor of Department of Psychiatry and Psychology at USC, and a true expert on trauma, and, and he was just inspiring. He was funny, he was obviously very knowledgeable, and it was just a great turnout, standing room only. They had to turn people away from this conference in talking about the intersections of trauma in someone's life from the time you're born, and how that may rest with you all of your life, and how, how trauma impacts you. And this was talking about, obviously, the varieties of trauma that occur with, with substance abuse and, and mental health abuse and, and challenges that, that population faces. So very good work by the Behavioral Health Department leadership and team to put that conference together. I'd also like to acknowledge that Limoneira Solar Project earned a LEED Gold Certification, and it was the first private sector LEED Gold project in Ventura, and has received the national certification of LEED Gold. And congratulations to Limoneira. And lastly, just to say that the, the CEO's office is working on criteria for, to give us a report back, criteria on the funds that have been designated by the board to move forward to work on the tenure strategy to end homelessness. And I just put that out there because I know that there's a lot of interest in the community, and interest in how folks may be able to leverage dollars and secure these funds, and that there, there is going to be criteria established that will be brought to this board for consideration for the distribution and use of those funds. So, so no one gets ahead of us. I wanted to just mention that. And that concludes my comments. Any others? We will adjourn to closed session. We don't have a report or anticipated report in closed session?
That's right, we do not.
Okay, we do not. All right. Thank you all. 12 o'clock.